Thursday, May 17th. I invite you to join with us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case of fire and the alarm sounds, there are two ways to exit this chamber. To my left and your right, through the double doors, turn left down the stairs. And at the bottom of the stairs, turn left again and outside of the building. Or perhaps the quickest and best way for you is at the rear of the chambers, through the double doors, and there again, just down the stairs. But in either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Charles Durin.
Present.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Guillermo Salazar is absent, and Richard Suzak is here.
And I guess all the regulars are here. All right. Approval amendments, May 3rd. Any additions, errors, or...
You want to make a motion?
Second. He moved it. And I seconded.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any additions, errors, or omissions?
I have a short correction here. One, two, three. Fourth line down, a fourth paragraph, it says, "Second Vice Chair Charles Lad seated, alternate Commissioner Linda DeGray for the absent Commissioner." That should be... She got seated farther down in the program here.
It would have been... I would have been seated at that time.
Right.
And then...
Actually, nobody was seated at that time because we just finished roll call and we didn't announce anything.
Okay. But the votes, the votes did require seating. And the votes would have been, at least for the two motions, the one to change the order and the other to seat Commissioner DeGray.
So we can see you.
I would have been seated in that, and I abstained from both votes.
Okay.
So it was 601 for the, those two motions.
Okay. So that should be seated, alternate Commissioner... I just blanked.
Sarah Gruber.
Sarah Gruber.
Anything further? Bearing none, all in favor?
One more. On page five, second sentence, he went on to this, to state that the prior restaurant had a full liquor, and you'd have license in there. It sounds like it was just one liquor, that's all. That is it.
Okay. Anything further? Bearing none, all in favor, as amended. Six, zero, one, one abstention. Okay.
Public participation.
At this point in the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on this agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address us under those conditions. Bearing none, we shall move along. There are no bond releases, and old business is done, we're up to new business. Public hearing 29...
Mr. Chairman, could I just, could I just comment on the bond releases?
Yes, sir.
Shaker, Shaker Heights, the, Mr. Lloyd has, again, today, asked when he could get the bond back that he believes that he bought from the prior owner. I have again informed him that bonds are, would be released to whoever posted the bond, so that would be the prior owner. But in addition to that, there is no record in the town of Enfield of those bonds being held. So I just wanted to, once again...
Have they been released?
There's no record that they were posted. So he keeps asking for the bonds to be back. It was four phases. You remember the original Shaker Heights?
Right.
Four phases.
Right.
And each bond was posted as the phases went along. And the fourth phase, which he's asking back for, was never built out under the prior owner. So at this point in time, we have apprised them once again that there's no record of those bonds having been posted. If they were being held, it would be the prior developer who would ask for them back. So I'm just keeping the commission apprised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a public hearing again, 2900, 61 Pleasant Street. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2900, 61 Pleasant Street, special use permit application for a second driveway, Connecticut Square LLC, owner applicant, map 27, lot 14, residential 33, R33 Zone.
Is the applicant present? Can you come forward, sir, and please explain to the commission what it is you plan to do?
Well, this is, this is...
I'll sit down and use the microphone. We'd like your name and address, please, for the record.
But you're on television, so... Michael Dunscoy, City Square LLC. It is just, with this Pleasant Street being done this year, I'd like to get, it's a four-family house building, and there is only parking for two cars. So with this Pleasant Street being done this year, I found a perfect opportunity to build additional space for tenants, to get them off the street, pretty much. That's all.
It's a double-wide driveway, right?
Yes.
So it'd be more than two cars?
Yes. Yes.
Questions from the commission?
I just was down there the other night, and I see your dilemma. I mean, it's a four-family house, and probably when it was built, not everybody had a car or they walked to work. But there are parking lots not far. Do they use, utilize those at all?
No, no, because, you know, they're always having issues, especially with the plow trucks, you know, they always had issues, you know, because I see that, you know, that, you know, they had the tickets, they had it, you know, like, not everybody moving the cars right away.
No, no, I'm talking, does the tenants currently utilize those parking lots that are like...
No, they currently utilize the streets, pretty much.
They just use the street?
Yes.
Okay.
But there are parking lots, what she's talking about, there are parking lots throughout the town that they are supposed to use.
Yeah. But, but there is no sign, "Do not park on the street," and they always park on the street next to the house. I mean, that's, that's the issue for, I guess it's for them, for me, and for the town, too, when they trying to plow the streets, or, you know...
Yeah, I understand. I was just wondering if they currently are using, utilizing those parking lots at the end of the...
Well, they're using probably in the wintertime, because I would assume they, they probably using in the wintertime, because somehow, you know, when the plow truck goes through, cars not there. But most of the time, they park right on the street.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, anyone else? Well, my dilemma is, is in our planning sessions recently, we're talking about changing that, and then, or changing some of the requirements for, for number one. Also, parking was just denied, the same type of parking was recently just denied to an individual downtown. So it, we realize you have a problem, or I realize that you do have a problem downtown, but it's, you have a problem, but so don't, or so doesn't every other citizen in the, in the area. My dilemma is, if we start at one, what happens to all the others off-street? I mean, it's a lot different nowadays, yes, with the car from the old horse and carriage, or the barns that were down there where you could store the, the horses and the carriage, you have narrow roads. We realize that. So it's sort of a dilemma.
Because, because is it possible that, you know, because right now, I'm just looking at your plan, and, you know, there's a relatively large, you know, driveway length adjacent to the house, and, and when, when two cars are actually pulled in, there's still room behind those cars for additional cars. And, and obviously, it gets into a sequencing problem in terms of, it's not convenient to have, you know, everybody move a car whenever they want to move a car. But, you know, also, you know, looking at the fact that, you know, you know, it's, you know, the, the planning and the door we open, once we start, you know, looking down this certain route, that, you know, we're, we're trying to make it convenient for everybody. And, and, you know, the thing is, you know, obviously, what, what we're trying to do is, is conform, you know, the area to what's there, not necessarily force things that, that once were, you know, approved into, you know, something, and then start down a, a path that, you know, we might not be able to, to turn around and get out of. So, so I, I think that realistically, you know, if there could be some way to work out, you know, some kind of a sequencing in, in terms of parking, I know it's not going to be easy, and, and I don't know if, if there's a dedicated, you know, two slots for the, the right two tenants, and two, no, the, the left two tenants don't have a slot, or, you know, how that works out, or is it first come, first served? You know, how does that work right now, in terms of, does, does two tenants have a parking spot and two tenants don't? Or does everybody get it, the first come, first served?
Two tenants have, two tenants don't. Yeah, because, you know, I mean, I, in the past, I tried to go in this path, and there is always going to be, always been issue of, he have to move the car, he didn't move the car, he parked, I mean, it's, it's, it's...
But, but, but when they took that apartment, they knew they didn't have a, a parking spot. They, they, you know, so, so basically, you know, if we were downtown Hartford, it'd be the same thing, where, you know, if, you know, if you had an apartment anywhere else, and you know you didn't have a parking spot, and you had to park in the street, you just learn how to park in the street, and then if the snowplows did come, you know, you'd have to move your car to, to the lot, you know, to the, to the parking lot where, you know, it wouldn't get towed. But, but there's, there's an alternative, in, in terms of, it's just inconvenient, but, you know, that, that might be the nature of the beast, where, you know, the thing is, if we made everything convenient to everybody, you know, it, everything would be such a mess, that nothing would ever, you know, make any sense. So somewhere down the line, you know, there has to be a little bit of inconvenience, just in order to get along, or else if everybody got everything that they wanted, you know, it, you know, there'd be chaos everywhere. So, you know, I, I can sympathize with you, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, if there was some way to, you know, replace whatever you're trying to propose with some greenery, or if you were going to be, you know, using some pavers instead of blacktop, and, and, you know, there was grass in between the pavers, and then you were going to plant some trees in front of your house in, in order to, you know, offset, you know, some of that, you know, then something, you know, possibly might be worked out. But to think that, you know, we're, you know, we should just, you know, make everything convenient for everybody, because this is what I want, and this is what I need, and this is what I should get, you know, I don't think that, that's kind of the mindset that planning does, you know, because if, if that happens, there's no planning, it's, it's chaos.
No, I understand. And, you know, I do have a lot of green space in the backyard, you know, I do have decent-sized backyard. And it's again, you know, when you're talking about it from a tenant's perspective, you know, they, you know, people, they find another apartment with a parking lot, and they leave. You know, what, what I'm trying to avoid it, to look for new tenants and problems, people moving from one apartment to, in other all the time. Yes, it is, it is convenient for tenants, convenient for everybody. And, you know, there is a room which is not used at all right now. There is a space, pretty much, you know, in the corner, not used at all. So that's why, you know...
Yeah, but, but that's part of, you know, what makes a neighborhood a neighborhood, is the fact that, you know, there, there is quiet space, there is, you know, relaxing space, there is green space, and, and it's not all asphalt, which, you know, and would make it, enhance, you know, the neighborhood, versus if you started paving everything, then, you know, it really doesn't, you know, create an atmosphere that's conducive to, you know, relaxation and, and, you know, brighten things up. It just darkens everything and, and makes things. So, you know, I, I, that's the concern I have, is, is that, you know, once we go down this path, you know, where do we stop?
Well, there is, again, there is like more than 50% of the land is green land still after even the pavement. You know, there is a lot of, it's not like something, you know, there is area, and there is no green left. There is a lot of green on the, behind the house, on the side still.
But, sir, the citizens in the rest of the town can't see your backyard from the street. And to make the house and the properties visible, and scenic, I guess, and we're trying to, the oil would plants, or planting, plantings and trees and so forth, and not just a landscape that is bare. And, Kenny?
I guess I'm in total disagreement. Thompsonville is nothing but a parking lot mess. And in the wintertime, when it comes to plowing, these people have no place to go. Telling this man that people, you know, have to have tension between them to get along, I'd never heard of such a thing in my life. And he does have a full backyard, and he's coming here at his own expense, I would take it, to put in a second driveway to try to fix a problem and relieve tension. And to sit here and tell him that it's not paver, or there's not enough grass or anything, we're not wetlands, we're planning and zoning. And he's here on his own trying to solve a problem that is a major problem in Thompsonville. The town of Enfield tears down buildings when the strand, if it gets torn down, it's going to be a parking lot. If it doesn't, we're going to need parking spaces. And he's right behind it. So I, I guess I'm totally lost as to why somebody willing to come in, pay to put a second driveway in, a four-family house, he's not asking to put a parking lot in a single-family house, he's trying to accommodate one car for each unit, I think is a total reasonable request. And if you're worried about the greenway, greenery, have them plant a couple trees in the front yard to solve the problem. But I have to support this 100%. I, I just, I've owned many properties down there, and I know the problems.
I just had a question. I noticed in the engineering, there was a question on, you know, the, the road's going to be redone, and so they wanted, I guess John wanted...
Just to hold off until...
Yeah, but I didn't see it in the conditions of approval. So if it's approved, that might be an additional item, so that...
Well, one...
John, they're replacing the catch basin, and John wants town staff to do it.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think that should be an additional condition.
Well, yes, because he's having a sewer...
Yeah, yeah. And that wouldn't hold anything up if it got approved, you know, it's just that you wouldn't be able to start until the town went through and put in the catch basin.
Well, the catch basin would be changed probably anyway, and the road reconstruction.
Right, right.
I was unaware where they were doing the road.
I would not want to see them start, if he gets approved, I would not want to see it start before the town has a chance to do that.
Well, I don't think he probably would want to, because they'd have to...
They'd just get dug up again.
Get dug up again.
One of my requests is actually, you know, if you look at the details, it's actually replace existing curve basin with a flat basin.
Yes.
So that's going to be part of the whole...
That would be part of the reconstruction, which would save him some money, because otherwise, he'd have to do it himself.
Right, but we, we wouldn't want him to start until the town did that.
Yes, I understand.
Does he, does he have property in front there that he could put in some...
Trees.
Some trees or bushes or some kind of plantings?
Can't tell by the pictures what he has.
No, no, the pictures don't show me anything.
Well, there is a lot of trees, there is a lot of bushes actually in the front of the property itself, you know. You know, I mean, it's, it's all, all pretty much in front of the house with these bushes right now.
I guess I couldn't agree more with, with Ken here. I mean, I, I laud the commission for what we're going, what we're looking at and workshopping these, the greenery in that area, but the state of the regulations now is not what is being asked, and this is a real problem. Do you live in one of the units in that property?
No, I'm not.
So it's not his problem. He can't speak to the inconvenience, he's merely inconveniencing for other families. And that's not a mere inconvenience, that's a huge inconvenience. I would say that this is solving a big problem for the town when they plow, for drivers, for safety, and a whole number of reasons why we would allow this in the past without requiring the planting of trees. So I, I, I understand this to be a real inconvenience, and you're confirming that for me now. So I, you know, I would wholly support this, this proposal.
Same thing for me. I absolutely think that it's necessary because of the nature of Thompsonville and the way it has, it was built, it was built as a place where people walked typically, and we have people driving cars now. We have somebody having, providing housing for people to live in, and being able to have that where you don't have, in essence, the liability to, with regards to people parking on the street, so on and so forth. And I think that it's important, in my mind, that, you know, we do this, I mean, coming here at your expense to make this, to solve a problem that helps, I think, everybody in essence. And I think when it comes down to it, I'm also not really necessarily in agreement with the tree thing. I don't necessarily believe that that's, that is pertinent to what we're looking at at this specific moment, and the way our regulations are, so...
I, I'm not asking for the trees, but if that would satisfy Rich's request...
That's what I'm looking at now.
Because, you know, the tree issue, it goes as far as, you know, Bigelow and Hartford Avenue had beautiful old trees lining both sides of the road. And when the town went in and did the roads, they cut them all down, and it's barren now. And so, you know, which way do you want it? You know, we can't plant trees and then have the town cut them down when they go put a road in. That was beautiful old growth down there that's gone now. It looks totally different, so...
But I don't understand the applicant's site plan to have trees currently that are being cut down for this.
No, they're not.
So, so in essence, it stays the same, except it gets some cars off the street, and otherwise doesn't change at all what it would look like. So to me, this would be an additional requirement that I'm not sure is, is called for in this instance. I, I agree, trees would look great in Thompsonville, and that's certainly something the commission should consider in the future. But right now, with respect to his proposal and the way his, his land currently is, I don't see that as necessary, but that's of course up to the commission.
Right, but I'd rather have a tree put in and get them to pass than have him lose by one vote because there's not a tree, if that's what it's going to take. So either way, I'm good with it.
I also say, I don't believe we're setting a precedent, because most, present, precedent, because most of the houses downtown don't have a yard wide enough for more than one driveway anyway, so you're not going to get, people come and say, "I want to put another driveway in if they only got 10 feet."
Oh, yeah, this is where he wants to go.
This property has a good size span there for that.
Yeah, most of them on Pleasant Street drive around the back of the house, and they park in the backyard, and there's no yard.
Another thought I had, where you could put a four-space pavement in the back and use the two-lane driveway to get there, that would be the other solution. That would be a little more expensive than doing this, and why would you ask for more expense if you don't have to?
Well, that, and the kids playing in the backyard, backyard shouldn't be parking lots. And that's unfortunately what a lot of Pleasant Street is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I would be for it.
Again, you know, I guess I'm, you know, I'm looking for, you know, something that would soften, you know, that, you know, condition, in, in terms of, you know, and, you know, again, it's, it's something that has existed for 60, 70, 80 years, you know, and, you know, it, it was acceptable. And, you know, what I don't want to do is, is all of a sudden, you know, get to the point where, you know, we're overly sympathetic. You know, I, I am sympathetic with your plight, in terms of, I grew up in this city myself, and I know what it's like to park in the park, on the street. But, you know, we did park on the street whenever we had to park on the street, because, you know, there was no other place to go, but you, you learned how to live with it, and, and it became a part of your life. And, you know, although it's inconvenient, it's something that's inconvenient at, at only certain times of the year. It's not necessarily inconvenient all the time. And, and you might not get a parking spot right in front of your house all the time either, so you might have to walk, even if you had groceries or something like that. So, you know, I totally understand that, but it's one of those kind of things where, you know, we need to, you know, also, you know, get, try to, you know, keep, you know, the neighborhood from becoming, you know, a, one large parking lot, too. And, and I think that's my concern, is that, you know, where do we stop, and, you know, how do we, you know, keep things under control?
And I completely agree with you, because, you know, there is reasons why I keep all these trees and bushes in front of the house, because it would be easy for me just to cut them down, you know, but I retain them, I own this property for a few years, and I retain this, you know, like bushes and trees in the front of the house, in the back of the house. I retain those, you know, I'm paying, you know, a lot of money to trim them, you know, to cut branches, you know, like, again, I completely agree with you. But at this point, I'm just asking, you know, it's 19 feet wide space for a parking lot.
How many cars are we talking about?
Two cars, two, two more cars.
So four cars in total?
Two cars, no, two cars total.
Oh, I mean, you got four, two...
Yes, two and two, yes.
And I, I saw the fire department wanted bollards against the house, or, or a building department, or somebody had suggested that. Are you aware of that?
You, you're talking about, you know, yes, 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 yes.
I think it was planning suggested wheel stops, only because of the way he had that, is that the, the driveway went right up against the house. And normally, you don't require wheel stops in a residential neighborhood.
You don't have to be bollards.
But, but there ought to be something that would prevent somebody from accidentally stepping on the gas and...
I do want to say one thing...
Yes, I was planning to do this, yeah, definitely.
Just one thing I want to say, is having gone down there...
I guess the fire department also said the same thing, so...
Having gone by your property, it, there is a lot of mature greenery there, so I don't have a problem with him not planting a tree, because there is a lot of greenery down there, and, and he does have the bushes. I was just curious, and if anybody was using, utilizing those parking lots.
I'm glad, I'm glad we had the discussion, because it clears up some of the questions I had, really.
You ready to vote?
Well, I don't know. I gotta change it, it's a public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Is there anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Hearing none, then I'll call, I'll close public hearing 2900. Okay.
Thank you.
I, that's up to you, I have no motion. Whatever you want to do.
I'd like to move that whereas the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has received an application for a second driveway and the widening of an existing driveway located at 61 Pleasant Street, Connecticut Square LLC, owner applicant, map 27, lot 14, R33 Zone, and whereas the commission held a public hearing on May 11th, 2018, and whereas the commission has determined that the second driveway and the widening of the existing driveway will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent street or adjoining properties, resolve the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves PH 2900 for the widening of the existing driveway and the application of the second driveway located at 61 Pleasant Street, Connecticut Square LLC, owner applicant, map 27, lot 14, R33 Zone, with, with the conditions of approval listed in the May 17th memo by the planning, by the department planner.
24 conditions.
And the 24 conditions.
Just the hearing was on the 17th, not the 11th. Yeah, would you correct it to the 17th?
14th.
The 17th.
17th.
17th, today.
The...
Second.
And you had made a suggestion that something be added, is that in here?
One condition should be put on there, even though the applicant is agreeable to it, just so there's no problem, that the work will not start until the town replaces the existing catch basin.
Well, they're going to redo the whole road.
I know, but we, we just want to make sure it's in there just in case, and he had no problem with it.
The only comment that I, I would have would, would be that, you know, if, you know, we're saying...
Now, this is a discussion and a motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Is that, you know, if we're saying that, you know, there's adequate greenery right there presently and that we don't have to add anything, I would like to maybe add a condition where if the bushes that are there right now get removed, that they be somehow maintained or replaced with some additional greenery that would, you know, reflect, you know, you know, an equal amount of...
Or maintained.
Yeah, maintained an equal amount of greenery there. And, you know, I guess I would support it along those lines.
No, I guess, no, it should have been in the fore because the motion's been made in the second, this was a place for discussion. No, that's why I asked if it was discussion. Okay. Well, it's not proper place, anyway. So, okay, we're at the place then, if you're ready to vote. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, it's 6-0, 6-1-0. If I may make a suggestion, if you get to reading a motion again, is please save some time in your voice or whoever's reading it, you may just want to mention the fact the draft resolution is dated May 17, or whatever date it is, and by the planning office, and that should cover it. Then you don't have to read every last sentence. It just would save some voices, I think. Okay.
He's all set.
That's all set.
Does he need to stop at the planning office for anything?
Yeah.
You have to come up to the planning office for your... Yeah.
Well, let's see. Public hearing 2907, 130 Elm Street. Secretary, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2907, 130 Elm Street, special use application for the temporary retail sales of fireworks. Chris La Tracia TNT fireworks applicant, Brix Moore, GA, freshwater owner, map 57A, lot 329, business, regional zone, BL zone. Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
So applicant here.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant notified us today that they were not able to be here, and asked whether you would consider it in their absence.
Well, is it the same applicant we've had other years?
It's the exact same application that you approved a year ago, same everything.
And this is just 130 Elm Street? That's all we're doing?
That's all we're doing.
Because we've had them also up on Hazard Avenue.
Right, and there was another one that was originally for tonight too over in the mall, but that one didn't post their public hearing signs.
Okay.
So, but this one here did post the signs, everything is, there is no, the staff supports it, it's exactly as you approved it, we did circulate it, and all of the reviewing departments have the list, and I don't believe there are any negative comments.
Okay. Any questions? We'll go ahead and take care of it then. Any other commissioners, questions through Roger?
So I might just ask if there's anybody here to speak?
I will. I just want to take care of the commission first. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Is there anyone would like to speak in favor or against this application? Hearing none, and I will close 2907.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the planning zoning hearing 2907, 130 Elm Street, according to the draft resolution as prepared by the Planning and Zoning Commission Department dated May 17, 2018.
Motion's made in seconded, any discussion? Roger, I was looking for my motion. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Several places through there, it mentions tents, and I think we should add...
Right, the, the, Jen did ask the applicant to clarify that, and they just gave us a generic description for Enfield, there is no tent, it's all inside, so...
Just to make sure, could we add another?
Right, I mean, we can put it in the record tonight, is that, but there is no tent.
Conditions is the number seven, there's not an approval for a tent, I don't...
Anything outside?
Yeah, well, whatever, even a table or anything, yeah.
Right, it's all inside.
No outside, number seven could be no outside display.
I got only three, right? I know three.
I'm sorry?
It's one, two, three.
I got four, five, six, specific conditions.
But there's only three of them, so I can make that as a...
Proceeding on the other side.
But it's still one, two, three, that's the same thing. So I'll make, you know, a condition four, I'll add a condition four that says that there shall be no outside displays or, you know...
Sales.
Sales, you know, outside of the building itself.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You need a second?
Yeah.
Second.
All right. So this is added. Anything further?
Got to get Ken to agree there, right?
Ken said, yeah, in fact, he added the whole thing.
No, he said he did the whole motion, but that's all.
All right. Have you ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, did I, did I add, I guess I did, I don't know where I'm at, okay. Okay, 29, 2912. Public hearing, is the applicant here? This is 399 Enfield Street, indoor design office. Applicant, please go forward. First, I'll have secretary take the roll to read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2912, 399 Enfield Street, special use permit application for an interior design office with interior and minor exterior site improvements located within the King Street and Enfield Street Design Overlay District. Marie Triano applicant, Frank Triano owner, map 33, lot 235, BL zone.
The applicant is here, if you will, please, your name and address.
Marie Triano, 1156 Enfield Street in Enfield.
All right, and if you would, please explain to the commission what it is you plan to do, or...
I'm planning to move my business from Agawam to Enfield. I love the building, we're just going to do some minor exterior changes. I think you all have the elevations, we're just going to take the existing porch and open up the walls, and it's going to be open, we're going to do one entrance, right now it's two. Right now it's two units, and we're going to combine it into one unit.
Questions from the commission? This used to be, I believe, the old Enfield press office.
Yes, that's what I'm told, yeah.
Yeah, and...
And lately it was a two accountant's office.
I had noticed that.
It, it looks lovely, you're going to do a very nice job, and I'm sure you'll be very busy, and it makes me happy when people come back to town.
Thank you.
It does, and that building needs attention, and has for a while.
It needs a lot of attention. We're going to put a new HVAC system and replacement windows.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Because I was looking, handicap accessible, I see you have stairs in the front, which is fine, but will you have some kind of way for...
There's none there now.
No, there isn't.
There isn't.
And then I saw that you were going to do the bathroom, is that going to be ADA?
It will fit, the existing bathroom will fit a wheelchair in there. There was a bathroom upstairs, it was put in a closet, you couldn't even, you couldn't move around in it, you could wash your hands at the same time that you're... So I would imagine that wasn't a code. They also put a makeshift bathroom in the garage. So that's coming out as well. Yeah, there's a, they put a bathroom in the garage.
I was just curious, because if somebody had come to your office in a wheelchair, I was wondering how they would get in, that's...
We would figure it out, but they would be able to move around the floor, we're opening doorways.
Yeah, I saw that you had an open space, but I was just concerned about entering, that's all.
The building department's going to, will address all that. It depends on how many employees, what, you know, the retail uses and stuff like that, whether they would require stuff like that.
It's not a retail store, it's an office. I have one employee, and we typically go to our clients' homes, it's interior design, so we...
So that's why she wouldn't really need handicap.
Right, that's why the code kind of varies as to what you're doing with the location.
When, in the narrative, they talked about having displays of furniture that you could touch and that, so, so that was my concern is, you know...
People will be there.
People will be coming in, and they'll be, so that was, that was the only concern, that was all.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, if you would, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone, again, would like to speak in favor or against this application? Hearing none, I'll close public hearing 2912.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I did look at your... Oh, I did look at your house, and I just envisioned what it would look like with the black, you know, you know, shingles and the black things, and I think it would definitely be a good improvement. But anyways, with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application 2912, 399 Enfield Street, in accordance with the draft resolution as prepared by the planning department dated May 17, with the 23 conditions. There are no site-specific conditions at this point, but, you know, if there is a requirement from the building department for some kind of a handicap access, that, you know, obviously you would have to do something along those lines. Second.
Motion's made in seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed, and no abstentions, you need honest...
Thank you very much.
Good luck, and welcome to, back to town, or welcome to town. All right. Moving too fast here. Okay.
2595, right?
2895.
2895, see, this is where I get screwed up.
Is the applicant here? This is 34 Enfield Street. Secretary, take the roll and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
Rich Suzak is here. And the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2895, 34 Enfield Street, application to modify special permit for McDonald's to allow for exterior modifications. McDonald's USA LLC, care of bowler engineering applicant, Enfield MAC LLC, and Enfield RMRC LLC, attention Giorgino owner, map 35, lot 80, BL zone.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant needs, the applicant needs to set up his PowerPoint on the laptop, so if you want to take a five-minute recess.
Okay, I didn't realize that. If you would, well, okay, you can, yeah, set up and then take a five-minute break until he sets up, or make a motion, yeah.
Like I make a motion that we take a five-minute recess?
Second.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Where'd this come from?
Crack those babies.
You gotta call a meeting back to order, Charlie.
Well, thank you. We call a meeting back to order. The secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
All right, sir, if you will introduce yourself. Well...
Good evening. My name is...
You regret the, you know, we haven't read the legal notice, right?
No, we didn't.
You read it before the break.
Oh, before we took the break. All right. That kept me up.
Good evening. My name is Jim Cranston. I'm with Bowler Engineering, representing McDonald's this evening for this application. Before you right now is the McDonald's on Enfield Street. We are proposing a couple of site modifications, and I'll go over those briefly with you this evening. What's shown before you right now is the property survey of the existing conditions. I'll just go over briefly how the site is laid out. There's two access driveways, one on Enfield Street, one on Connecticut Ave. There is a drive-through feature at this restaurant, and there is no speaker in place. There was a restriction that was placed on this property back in the day when it was built to not allow speakers. So there is no speaker, and the menu board is in the back over here. And this is the, the drive-through facility over here. We're here before you tonight to modify the special permit for site, several site improvements, and also some building maintenance features. This is a color rendering of the final site as it would look after the improvements are constructed. And I'll just go over with you what those changes are. Really, the biggest change for this, these site improvements are the ADA improvements. McDonald's went around to all their sites and they did an ADA study, both in the building and outside of the building. There are some areas of the site that currently don't comply with regulations. There are slopes that exceed the maximum allowable slopes. There are some access issues, some ramp issues and things like that. So what this plan does on the outside of the building is address all of those concerns. So what we've done is we've constructed some new ADA parking over here on this side with accessible pathways.
We can't, we can't see that where you're...
The dot doesn't come up.
The dot doesn't come up.
He thought it would be projected up here. That's why I was pointing here. I can stand up here if you'd like. I can use the mouse, too. That's fine. Okay. Sorry about that.
That would be, then it would come...
I thought it was projected, so the ADA spaces are up here. And then the access path, the accessible walkway would be right here. The walkways around the building would get reconstructed. Today, there are brick pavers out there, and we would put in new concrete sidewalks and...
Can we ask a question as you go along, or would it disrupt you?
Why don't I go over the site?
Well, I picked up one thing, and since you were just talking about it, I noticed, I'll leave that up there because that's what I'm gonna refer to. Your walkway from the north side of the, from Enfield Street into the parking lot doesn't have the pedestrian crosswalks in there, and it's wide open.
Over here.
And that's at the entrance.
This one here?
Right. There are no, and you notice the one on the south does have all the way across the parking lot.
Yep, I can certainly address that. The one...
That is on, on your drawings as well.
Yep. So the one up here, this is an existing sidewalk.
Right, but you should add the, the crosshatches for the pedestrian walkway.
So I'll, I'll address that. So what we've done, because of this, this existing sidewalk being located at the main entryway, we really don't want to encourage customers to use that, just kind of for liability reasons. This, if we had a crosswalk here, it's kind of a wide open area. That's kind of why we...
That's the entrance, and that's where they're coming in, and then, and then, somebody's gotta be warned that people may be coming across that sidewalk.
Okay, so we can revisit that with our client and see if they want to paint that. But what we've done is we've added a second connection. This one on the bottom of the page is actually new. That's not existing.
Right, I, I realize that. And you do have the crosswalk there painted.
Exactly.
But that's also an exit, so you get as much traffic going out as you do coming, well, except the ones that aren't gonna use the drive-through.
Yep, it, it is an exit. They're not coming in off the street. I think when people come in off the street, they're probably traveling a little bit faster. In this case, when they leave the drive-through, they're driving straight, and they can see if there are pedestrians, whereas if they're turning off of Enfield Street, they're making a turn, they're not gonna see people till their, their car's turned, so...
It's not that much of a sharp turn, I don't think, as you have there, but... We shall see.
So that, that's really the main reason why we've added the second connection to the right way.
But you have the people crossing there, but I don't know what the law requires.
So as far as the ADA improvements go, there will be new ramps and new access ways to the customer doors. One of the other features...
So where are the customer doors that you're there? You just mentioned it.
Sure. So there are doors over here on the side. There's a vestibule over here where I'm circling the cursor. And then there are doors up front, one from the patio area, and then one on the side here.
Right, so you're not doing any changes to the doors?
There are actually architectural improvements as part of...
All right, I just, location. There's no, no change in location to the doors?
No.
All right.
Nope. This is, um, this is a photo of the existing menu board. I'm showing this to you because we're actually proposing to remove this and replace it. These existing menu boards are about 50 square feet and kind of unsightly. So this is what's out there today at the back of the building. And two of the new features that we're proposing here are digital feature menu boards. The smaller one is shown on the site plan at the drive-through area. It's about 20, actually, I'm sorry, it's about 12 square feet in area. It's literally a digital display like a TV screen in a cabinet. And what it does, it allows them to change the display from within the, the restaurant as opposing to come out and manually change the display. This next slide shows the new menu board. This is half the size of the current one that's out there, so it's about 22 square feet. This is actually two TV screens side by side. And relative to brightness, it has the same technology as your smartphone, has an auto dimming feature. So during the day, the background is, is brighter, and then at nighttime, when the lighting levels get lower, it dims down, so lighting will not be a concern. This is a overlay plan, just to show you the contrast between what's out there today and what's proposed. So on this plan is, are the proposed improvements. Everything that is going to be built in the end of the day is black, and existing features that are getting removed are red. So it just shows you the minimal changes that we're making to the site. We're not changing the number of parking spaces. There's 55 spaces today. And after the project, there will also be 50, 55 spaces. So that, that's really the, a brief summary of, of the site changes. So I guess if you have questions on the site stuff, I can go over that, and then I can go over the building changes? If that works for you?
If, if you go back to the, well, I don't know, it's questions from the others.
I was just curious, the, um, the digital pre-browse board?
Yes.
Is that, someone would drive up?
Yep, I can show that to you in a minute.
And then have to touch it?
Nope.
How does that, I'm just curious how that works?
Sure. Good, good question. So this is the, the drive-through area here. This angled, larger feature, this is the menu board. Just before that, so the car behind the person ordering would be sitting facing this pre-browse board. It'll just show a couple of features or options for them before they actually order. It's just a, it's basically a little display.
Okay, it's just like a screen?
Yep.
And it's not something that someone manipulates by?
No, no.
Can I just say something?
Still image.
It's kind of like what their specials are at that time.
Yeah, the way, when you said smartphone technology, I was like, oh, is someone gonna like have to reach out through their window?
It's like coffees are 99 cents and, so, you know, things like that.
Makes it easier for them to change it with the different meals, supposed to coming out and manually changing it.
Okay, will this new board have a speaker in it?
It will not. McDonald's wanted to propose that. We met with Roger, and he, he advised us that we should not go down that road because we would not be successful, so we have taken that off the plan.
Thank you.
No one else? Let me, back to that first, first one. Sheet C3, and I don't know if you have it, shows a patio fence to be removed. There's a total fence, fence around that patio.
Yes.
Then Sheet 4 says, reset, uh, the gator, I'm sorry, the gate and the rail on the west corner.
Yes. So...
And then C5, the handicaps are, are near, near the patio. Well, let's see, that's, C5. Okay. And then on C, C5, or, yeah. See, you got this.
Yeah.
So you got the big cutout. Why, first of all, why is a cutout?
Sure, I can, I can address that. As part of the ADA survey, they surveyed the slopes of the patio area, and there's outdoor seating. So in order to meet code, the surfaces can't exceed 2%. That small area, there are some exceedances that are more than 2%. So we're taking a small portion out and reconstructing it to comply.
Would you repeat that?
Sure. For, for outdoor seating, if it's going to be accessible for handicap patrons, there are slope requirements, and the survey identified that that portion exceeds the slope requirements. So we're addressing that and making it comply by removing and...
But the handicap, where are they coming in from? That's what I wanted to ask.
So there's a, there's a gate on the side. There's an existing gate on that side of the building.
Right.
There's also a door at the front of the building that enters the patio. So there's two different access points.
There's a, there's a way, yeah, but on the inside, if you come out from the inside of the, uh, out on the, from the inside of the restaurant, how do you get into that square area if you wanted to?
So, all right, so that square area is just the, the limit of the saw cut? End of day, there's not gonna be a boundary there. It's just a line demarking where the saw cut will be and where the repair area is. So that is not a fence.
Okay, so this, this, this is not, this line?
Goes away.
This one goes away?
Yes.
Oh, well, all right, I, I didn't see that. Well, then, on, on, let me go further. A1, Sheet A1, shows no change in the patio.
So Sheet A1 is the architectural floor plan. Our, our scope as a civil engineer is for everything outside of the building, so our, our plans cover the changes to the patio. The architectural plans are related to the, the building itself.
No, I know. All right.
They're just...
I know, but the Y, the Y, again, this line wasn't, this, this line had disappeared, and on the other one it had a line, so you didn't have, you didn't have the square.
The chairman's point is the architecturals in the site plan, they gotta match up. So either, either they change their architecturals or you change your site plan, but they gotta be internally consistent.
So these are, you know, these are gonna end up hopefully going to construction drawings. We don't typically show changes for the site, for the building contractor on the architectural plans and vice versa. So to show a site change... I mean, we can add it, we can add it. It's just, we'd have to then clarify who's doing what work. It's not a big deal.
Okay. And I think it's C1, too, is, is, I got a problem with this, okay.
C2?
No, hold on. See, yeah, I'm sorry. No, the number, after C7, I think it was. There were no numbers on the plans. I didn't know what they were.
C7?
What's next?
Then we just have overview.
Yeah, they're just Connecticut overview, so, so it was nothing to refer to, then, yes. And I find it difficult, I, I was looking around when I'm doing, and I don't know if anybody else has a problem. I happen to know this restaurant, but I don't know why people are adverse to using the northeast, south, and west arrows on, on their drawings, but if it was the building, I wouldn't be familiar with, it's sort of hard to orient them so that you understand what they're doing.
Well, at least the north arrow, because you can figure the other three out.
Well, yeah, at least the north arrow would help.
On which plan?
All of them. I don't think you have them on video.
They're in the upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, you gotta fold the pages all the way back, Charlie, and you'll see it.
Oh, are they stapled together?
No, it's, it's closed, but no.
They're right here.
Oh, well, oh, yeah, oh, well, that's what I, that's, all right.
They're there.
They're there. I'm sorry.
It's okay. You can miss it. It's easy.
Well, that's the way I was looking at the maps. I guess it would help if you're on the outside page. All right, thank you. The commission is seeing, those are for the roof.
Would you like me to go over?
The color, the color panel that you passed around, there were two, two items on it. Which goes where?
Sure, so I'll start with the architectural features next. So there are two handouts he gave you, one's for one of the sites. All right, so that's the sample board. That is the proposed architectural shingle. I'll go over the building changes right now. So what I have on the screen is the existing building. It's a split-faced block with a shingled roof, and there are white light bars on the roof. This is just another view of the front of the restaurant. Again, the white light bars and then the McDonald's sign on the roof. So it's, it's part of the architectural... So as part of the architectural changes, they'd like to reshingle the roof, and as part of that, they would like to remove the white light bars from the roof. We would also put up a new McDonald's sign. It would be identical to what's up there, except it would be an internally lit LED sign, so it'd just be more energy efficient. Sign would be identical. I do have color elevations, that's the handout that was provided. This was something that the planning office asked of we prepare. They reached out to us yesterday, said this is something that you'd be interested in seeing. So we had the architect pull this together today. This generally shows how the building would look with the removal of the white bars, and then the new McDonald's sign out, out front. As part of the internal building changes, they also do an internal ADA survey. They did find non-conformities with their restrooms and other features in and around the building. So the building permit that we submit is going to show the internal changes to address that. There's also going to be new finishes, new tile, new, you know, new ceilings, new finishes, just to freshen up the inside of the restaurant.
That'll be nice.
The commission likes to you to go over the floor plan and then changes you're making. You do have floor plans in your package.
So we did submit a floor plan. I do not, I can pull it up if you want, I have it. Okay.
Any questions on the exterior?
I have one. In terms of, you mentioned the fact that the existing exterior skin is a split-faced block. Are you going to be enhancing that, you know, the masonry, you know, cleaning it, or, you know, painting it, or doing something? Because normally, split face eventually starts absorbing, you know, atmospheric things, and it starts getting gray and dingy and things like that.
Sure. They actually will be cleaning the exterior. I'll note that the elevations call for painting it to match existing color, but with the type of block, you just don't paint that type of block. So what we will be doing is, the entire exterior will be, will be cleaned and pressure washed. And you can make that a condition if you'd like, but we will be doing that.
Okay. Because did you ever, do you like add, you know, a sealer so that it doesn't start absorbing moisture, especially if you're going to be pressure washing, and maybe, you know, removing some of the resilience of, you know, some of the original impervious materials that might have, you know, kept it watertight, and all of a sudden, it becomes more absorbent to moisture and things like that?
I'm not sure what, what they would use. It's possible, but I'm not sure as the means and methods. That would be included in the building permit application.
Right, yeah, and again, it's just something that you might consider if you're going to be doing that.
Sure.
So just for the information, the commission, there's the, the McDonald's, or Mr. Cranston on behalf of McDonald's originally submitted a redo of the entire outside of the building, but it was not consistent with your design, your infill design standards, or what you would require.
The overly distorted.
Right, and so what they, what they scaled it back to was to reshingle the roof and keep the mansard roof. Originally, the mansard roof was coming off, and, and put the McDonald's up there. So it was sort of, I understand the commission's question about, you know, the CMU on the side and everything, but there were plans to, like, completely overhaul the architecture, but it wouldn't look like New England, and it wouldn't look like your design plans.
Question on still exterior. You have exterior signs, McDonald's signs, exits and entrance signs. Some were vandalized, are they going to be replaced, or?
On the building?
Repaired? No, they're, they're at the entrances of the, was it Connecticut Avenue?
So right now, the plans call for maintaining those signs?
One, I think, is it's gone.
We can certainly...
Or broken off.
We can look into replacing those if they're allowed by right. I thought we looked at zoning, and there were some restrictions, so we weren't going to touch those, but if that's a concern, we can certainly look into that.
I was just wondering what you were doing with them, I didn't see them on the, on the maps or anything. I think, I think, I don't know about the ones, you don't notice them much anymore. I noticed them, they were damaged.
So we can check, I believe Roger's involved with the sign permitting process?
Yes.
So we can review that with him, see if that's an option.
I just, what you're going to do, all right. Interior, I guess.
So this is a floor plan that shows the final layout. It doesn't really compare and contrast existing and proposed. But in looking at this plan, this area here is the restroom area. This area is getting reconfigured to provide proper clearances, adjustments of handles within the restroom area. That's generally what, what they're doing in there. So I'm not sure what, what level of detail you're looking at inside the building. But again, we would submit for a building permit, and the full details of exactly what's happening, finishes, any wiring changes, things like that, that would be included. The layout itself, though, the seating area, the area dedicated to seating is not changing, meaning it's not growing. There will be a new seating configuration within, within the restaurant as well.
I just have one. I have one, just one. Are you going to put a kiosk, an ordering kiosk somewhere? Because I know that's kind of what all the restaurants are doing, so that you can, as you're standing there waiting, you can place your order, and when you get to the counter, is that in this?
Yes.
Are you going to be planning that?
Yep, that's a great question. If you look at the last sheet, sheet 1A, that has a seating layout plan, that probably shows...
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So those are basically touchscreens, like you were asking before. When you're inside, it gives the customer the option of going directly to a display and placing their order and paying for it. The associates will even walk up and help people, you know, educate them, how to use them.
And I'm just looking at this, and I'm a little confused, where you're talking about those kiosks are going to be placed.
Sure, one second.
This is seating, I think.
Okay, this is the bar, this is service?
Yeah, I don't know.
I know. If I could find the door.
So the front counter is, is right here. Kiosk is, should be right behind there, right here.
Okay.
It faces two sides, so this would be the kiosk, and then someone could go on this side, and someone could go on this side.
All right, thank you.
And then they would also roll out the dining option, where people make their order, and they sit down, and they're assigned a table number, and then they're served. That's, that's part of the change with this program.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are any of those tables that you have, or do you know, that can be moved together, or are they all on stanchions and cemented into the floor? I know you have groups of people come in, and they like to congregate with each other.
I'm not sure how they're, if they're fastened to the ground or not, but those finishes would typically be part of the filing for the building permit as well.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's different, I guess, over there.
And then, again, ADA compliance, accessible areas, those are defined as well.
Be quiet over there today. Too much candy?
Sugar cola.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against the application? I see one back there in the dark. Please come forward, sir, if you would move your chair, and, right, you have the opportunity to answer him if you would desire. I'll let him have the desk, please, just, thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Scott, I live at 17 Connecticut Avenue. I'm a neighbor of this McDonald's, and I'm actually very happy to hear how planning has been handling this. They've taken into consideration previous applications for special use permits, and that's a good thing. Is there only going to be one internal kiosk?
You just got to ask a question, and then the commission will...
We'll try to get, he'll answer that when he gets a chance.
Because I've been to several of their restaurants, that they do have a couple, and they're at the back of the ordering area, and certainly associates do come and offer to help you place your order, and then...
Are you talking exterior or interior?
No, no, right inside, where you walk into order. In other words, usually where you would order, and then step back to wait for your order.
Right.
And that's where I've seen the kiosks, and...
That's where you pointed out, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. I do get what you're saying about the crosswalk, though. If you're going to have a sidewalk coming into a parking lot, there should be indication on that pavement, there's a crosswalk.
Or maybe a sign...
And if you have to sign it to say, be careful of pedestrians, then that's what you do, but...
Right, a sign either for the traffic coming in, or for the pedestrian.
Or take that sidewalk out.
Well...
I've been through that, that drive-through many times, some recently. I've noticed that there are holes where they've hung either collection boxes or signage in the wall of the building, and they were the kind where you put a plastic insert in, and then the screw goes into there, the plastic inserts, it's very unsightly. So I'm hoping that in the course of redoing the outside, those get addressed so that's looks right. Do we have a color for the roof?
Yes, sir, this is what was shown. Black.
Okay. Because I know in the past, they wanted to make it red because it attracts customers, and I didn't really want that down the end of the street, me personally, anyway. And I'm a fan of the light bars going, I think that's not a particularly attractive architectural feature. Again, it's meant to draw people, I think, and there's not a whole lot of competition up there. And I do applaud McDonald's for addressing the ADA issues there. Obviously, they're, they're being a responsible corporate citizen. And I will say that the current owner, operator of that restaurant is a great neighbor. He's done a very nice job there, other than every now and then, one of his contractors forgets to shovel the sidewalk, but that gets addressed. So I'm, I'm in favor of this, and glad to see that they're, they're doing it the way the commission has asked to have it done in the past, and obviously, they're just trying to do the right thing for everybody. That's what I got.
Thank you as a citizen for coming out and expressing yourself.
You know if it's McDonald's, I'll be here, Charlie, if I can.
Thank you. Anyone further would like to speak in favor or against? Last call to speak in favor or against. Do you want to answer about the kiosk, whether there's only going to be one or two?
Sure, so the, that red area that I had highlighted, behind the ordering area, the counter, that would be where the kiosk is, and there is one, but it's two-sided, so there'd be an order point on this side, and an order point on this side.
So two people would be using it.
It would serve two customers.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Last call to speak in favor or against?
Because, because were you going to address that, that crosswalk with the, from the north sidewalk area, as to, you know, whether that's going to be, you know...
You could have them work that out with Roger, if you want to do that, because he may not be able to do that, and we can leave that to Roger.
Well, I would, I would suggest, if you, if you want it, you put it in your conditions of approval, because other than that...
Even with the crosswalk, somebody should have a sign, to me, a sign is either watch for cars or watch for pedestrians.
Well, the only thing that happens is, if you have a crosswalk, then, then the cars are obligated to sort of stop for pedestrians in a crosswalk.
Well, they are, yes.
Right.
But it's already in a parking lot. The whole thing's a parking lot, so cars generally know when they're driving there, that there's people walking around. I get, I get that it's different.
Well, there are, they walk all over the place, but this is a, if you come off a sidewalk, you expect it to be safe.
Oh, the sidewalk one, okay.
My thought was, instead of having that diagonal thing coming in, if you could put up that, put up that, where that crosswalk is, all you have to do is, instead of having that crosswalk come diagonally, and then walk everybody across the parking lot, why don't you just put a little bit of a jog in that crosswalk and stripe right over to the entrance?
What do you...
See, where you have a walkway there?
Where?
So you just...
This one?
And have, you got it coming in, well, just turn it, and then put a, stripe it right across to the, to the entrance to the building, rather than making people walk through the parking lot.
Well, that's where I would have expected to, but you're still going across the parking...
Are you saying this, come this way?
What I'm saying is, just take this thing here, and put the sidewalk down here, and stripe it right across to the sidewalk, then there's no...
Then that's closer to the cars coming in.
You're still, it's getting closer to the cars coming in.
I would do the same thing, but run across the back of the spots to the two existing crosswalks from the ADA.
Oh, yeah.
Then it gets them farther away from the entrance, and it doesn't look like an access as soon as you leave the building, because I see what they're trying to do, they're trying to avoid people from using that, because that is the main entrance. Somebody comes in, you know, 2:00 in the morning, after a night drinking, and there's a crosswalk there, where if they deter people by not having it there, and if they were to direct it across the back of those spots to there, the people, I think they're being more safer.
So...
I agree with that.
I can see both ideas. What I'd like to do is work something with Roger, and the reason I say that, to stripe behind those spaces, there's actually an ADA consultant that specifically scrutinizes our plan, and they've always frowned upon us striping a walkway behind the spaces just for liability purposes. You're now funneling people directly behind there. I know people walk there anyways, if it's not defined, but now, when you're funneling people directly behind those spaces, I think it's...
Well, you go in there, and they're walking usually out of the, out of that double doors, and they go to the parking, which is across the parking, across the drive-through lanes anyway, so...
They do.
They're out there, try to keep them in one place.
If we can agree to work with Roger and staff to come up with a, an agreeable solution amongst both parties, I think.
You could, with, I don't know, the traffic safety officer, any help, or whoever. We could leave it to you, Roger, it's, I guess, if that's...
I mean, I'll work on it, and if, I can, I can bring it, I can bring it back and show it to the commission at some point.
Or maybe a sign would handle it.
If we did add a...
Caution pedestrians or something, I don't know.
I will tell you, if we do, if we are allowed to add that crosswalk, we would add signage pedestrian crossing with the person and the arrow pointing down.
Sure.
That we would definitely add. It just helps, helps identify it.
Or I notice on the highways now, they got the diamonds before the crosswalks, I, which is what, a warning reason? Something new I've seen in the highways. But, all right, we could put that as a condition, then, to have them work with Roger and the safety officer.
But they don't have to come back.
No, 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 no. Because that's holding up construction, and it's, you've got short time enough, anyway. Since we've been doing more talking, I'll open it again. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. And I shall call, close, public hearing, 2895. General entertaining motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, you know, carrying 2895, 34 Infill Street, according to the draft resolution as prepared by the Infill Planning and Zoning Planner dated May 17th, with the 32 original conditions, adding an additional condition number 14A, undersite specific, that the crosswalks be addressed at the north side sidewalk entrance into the building property.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that in all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? unanimous? Okay, are you... Are you going to represent the next group, too? Okay, then the secretary, please take the role and read the legal notice for public hearing 2896.
Okay.
This is Skidico, the red store.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2896, 585 Hazard Avenue, application to modify the special permit for McDonald's to allow for exterior modifications. McDonald's US LLC, care of Bowler Engineering, applicant P&amp;D Realty, co-owner with NAI Plotnik... Oh, care of NAI Plotnik owner, map 110, lot 12, BL Zone. Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Again, just for the record, because it's a new hearing, identify yourself again, please.
Jim Cranston with Bowler Ring, representing McDonald's this evening. We are here before you for the McDonald's on Hazard Avenue, which is located in the Skidico Plaza. Now, the scope of work on this project is nearly identical to the prior application. I will walk you through briefly what's out there today and what we're proposing. This restaurant also has, obviously, an existing drive-thru, except in this case, there are no speaker restrictions. The drive-thru area circles around the back of the building, and the menu board is right back here. Similar to the other project, we also need a special permit modification for the changes that I'm going to walk through. This is a, again, this is a colored rendering showing the site after the improvements are completed. There are numerous deficiencies for ADA in this property as well. In fact, all of the exterior sidewalks are getting replaced with new ramps constructed. The ADA parking will be in a similar location as to where they are today, but they will now be striped to be compliant, and then the slopes will also be compliant. On this site, the menu board is in the back of the building, similar to where it is today. It has moved back slightly. And then the pre-brow's, the smaller menu board, is right here on the corner of the This is a site photo of this restaurant menu board. Again, it's over 50 square feet in area, so this also would get removed and replaced with the digital menu board. Same exact product. This is the pre-brow's. And then this is the double display menu board, which is about 22 square feet. There is another feature, because there is a speaker allowed here. On the detail sheet, there's an overhead canopy, which has a speaker integrated into it, so the canopy will protect customers from the elements while they're ordering, and then the speaker is just integrated into the column for the overhang canopy. This is a similar overlay plan showing existing site features getting removed and demoed in red, and new features, final features, in black. We are slightly changing the alignment of how this drive-thru entrance is laid out, and we're actually increasing the amount of green space over here, so we're adding, removing some pavement and realigning it. But then back here, we're actually sliding the parking down to accommodate the new ADA layout, so it's really a wash when it comes to the green area on the site. And again, as you can see, all of the changes are happening in and around the building, nothing on the exterior. And this site does not have a sidewalk in the right of way, so we are not proposing a connection for customers. Those are the site changes in a nutshell, so if there are any questions on the site features...
On the lower right-hand corner, or left-hand corner.
Yes.
I lost the picture.
Oh, you want me to go up one?
You have a door there. No.
Right in the front door.
Nope.
You want a picture of the building?
Where you were before.
Want the colored one?
Yes, that one right there.
This one.
There's three parking spaces, I think, to the left of it.
Right here, yeah.
Right. Is that door coming out? I don't see it in the picture here.
So there's a door on the drive-thru side, and right here...
Right.
There is a door still, yes.
That's right here, that's this one. That's this door.
That door would serve customers that park in the parking spaces on the left of the building, and then also, if there's a delayed order, customers park over here in these dedicated spaces, and then the store employee will walk out that door to give them their meal if it is delayed.
So I just park there and go in that?
You can do that, too?
I don't, I don't, you know, I just wondered if you're gonna still have it there.
Yes. We are not removing any doors.
You run over right away.
I'll make sure I'm in the driver's.
Will they be making any improvements to the entranceway? I, it's kind of a weird layout, but you're driving through the parking lot around your property to get into it, and that roadway is just all torn up, the potholes and stuff like that. And it's not on McDonald's property or leased property, but it is, you have to access that to get to your property, like even going to the car wash next door to you. And there's some holes in there that...
That whole parking lot, you're right.
Oh, yeah. That parking lot is atrocious, and it looks like McDonald's leases the property, and I'm not going to tie anything up, but it's something that really McDonald's should address with the owner of that property and have that fixed.
Yeah, this is, in fact, a lease. It's shown right on the plan.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of those concerns. It hasn't really been brought to our attention.
We are, it's, it's... It's a job to get in there from, let's say, Taylor Road, if you come in off of those, that one. And you come in, it's like a minefield, really.
Actually, that's a planning and zoning violation, by the way.
Well, it probably is, but the parking lot is...
You have a section in your regulations, actually, that the sites must be maintained in good order. I looked that up after the last meeting, when it came up with respect to another applicant. And it's right in your, it's right in your site plan performance standards that says that, you know, parking lots must be maintained in good order.
Well, maybe we send a notice to the owner. I mean, it really has nothing to do with the applicant, but I think it'd benefit the applicant.
I'm not saying it's McDonald's...
Right, yeah.
Well, I'm sure they'll, they'll probably want to keep McDonald's happy. Now that it's being put out there, the owner might be a little more, not necessarily...
I think it looks pretty well occupied, but you'd think somebody would say something.
Yeah, but that parking lot is...
Okay, well...
Speak to our...
Anything on the McDonald's, other than the parking lot?
Nope.
We could go all the way to the parking lot. Okay, I'll open it to the public.
Going to go over the building?
The roof.
Building changes?
Let him do the building, Charlie.
I'm sorry?
He should do the building. Just describe the building.
Do you like building features?
Right, I'm sorry.
Sure. So this, this building has much different architecture than the one on Enfield Street. It's actually pretty unique. I haven't seen a McDonald's like this. So this is just a side...
You don't have the potholes in that driveway.
What's that?
You don't have the potholes in the driveway.
Oh, look at that. It's only from May of last year. So this building is also split-faced block. It's, has a red color to it. They have these unique blue tile bands throughout, and then these mansard roofs as well, with the white light bars. Front view of the restaurant, again, the white light bars, and then a single McDonald's sign on the roof. The scope for this exterior is similar to the other one in that they would like to remove the light bars, re-shingle the roof with the exact same product, with the architectural shingle, and then put up a new McDonald's sign, similar to this one, except it would be internally lit with LED lighting for energy efficiency.
Are you gonna re-shingle this one brown, rather than the black like the other one?
No. I, you know what, I had a feeling someone was gonna pick up on it, and when I first received it from the architect today, that was my same question. They are, they will be the same product. For some reason, it didn't come out the same on this rendering. But if you look at the elevations that were submitted, the actual product of the shingle is listed on the elevation that we filed, so that is what will be installed.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one. In terms of on your demolition plan, you show that the canopy, I guess, at the rear elevation, or the side canopy off the rear elevation, is being removed. If you look at it, you're drawing...
Where are we looking?
D 2.2. But, but then, but you never replace it?
Hmm. Let me take a look at the photo, see what's out there.
It's out there in the photo, too. Oh, I don't know.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that change. So there is a, looks like it's a, just an overhang?
Correct.
That they're removing. I'm not sure why they're removing that.
Keeps some people driving, they're getting their order right there.
Yeah, sometimes they'll, I don't know if they have two windows here or three, but sometimes they'll change operationally how they...
Sure, one for the money, one for the food.
So let's see. So you know what, there are three, I think there's, there used to be a window there. If you look on the elevation below it, there's a blank out in the wall, so that canopy is not really serving a function on D 2.2. So they're removing it.
Because, because when you look at the elevation, it shows a canopy there. And this is further down the line somewhere.
So I have the elevation up. Oh, shoot. So the one you're referring to is over here. And looking at this, it looks like it's over here. All right, so it would actually be down here. It's at the far end. You notice on the black and white, there's a step down in the roof.
Because what sheet are you looking at?
Sure. So D 2.2. There's a step down in the roof. This is the rear cooler area, the rear freezer.
Oh.
So at the far end, if you look at the elevation, it's actually no longer on the color elevation. That canopy is eliminated.
All right. So there's, right now, there's two canopies, and you're gonna be eliminating one of the two.
One of the two that doesn't have the mansard roof, correct. The other, the other one is a mansard canopy, but yes. One has a shingle over it, the one where you pick up your food. The pay window does not have a mansard shingle over it, it's just a straight candle lever canopy. That would stay.
So if I'm looking at your elevation one on D 2.2, the left-hand canopy is gonna be removed, and then there's a right-hand canopy over the collection, I've never gone to this McDonald's, I'd have no clue what it, if that's a collection window or a buy window, but, but there's two canopies. So they're removing one and keeping one.
So technically, I guess there's, well, there's two canopies, and then the third one is a canopy slash roof, I guess you'd call it. Right?
All right, yeah. So, so you are removing one and keeping one.
The one at the far rear, which currently doesn't serve a function, is going to be removed. And I wasn't even aware of that change, but that's, that looks like that's what they're doing, because there is no longer a window at the rear.
All right.
Anyone else? You want to do interior?
If you'd like me to, I can pull up that seating plan.
I'll get the chair. Hold on.
It's all right.
I'm just gonna be fired.
Huh?
Which way they're turning. I just did my arms.
These are tough to handle.
So this seating plan just shows the non-kitchen portion of the building. Much different layout than the, than the other one. A lot of bench tables over here. The kiosk area is this red area. Again, it's behind the main counter. This is the main counter. So again, it's a single, double-sided kiosk, so two customers would be able to access that.
Are you gonna keep the play area for the children on the other side? South side of the building?
There were tables out there, too.
I'm not aware of there being a play place. There might be a small, right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would, that would remain. They're not proposing seating in that area. But it's not a full-blown play place.
No, it used to be.
No.
Yeah.
There's one climbing thing.
Any questions on the interior?
No.
Ready for the public? Okay. Anything further, and I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. I'll close public hearing 2896. Chair, entertain a motion to... Do whatever you want.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2896-585-Hazard Avenue, with the draft resolution as prepared by the Enfield Planning and Zoning Department dated May 17th, with the 30 conditions listed.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing then, if you're ready to vote, all in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions, unanimous.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Being well-prepared, we didn't have a problem. Okay.
This is working.
Public hearing 2904, 130 Elm Street, Panera...
Mr. Chairman, while they're setting up, I did provide the commission with some materials that you didn't receive previously. On your tables tonight, you received the two-page, what, what the, what the restaurant's gonna look like in color, and the color chart on the back. So what you didn't receive in your package was a letter dated March 20th concerning trip generation. It's a four, a three-page letter from Jason Adams, PE. And also, the questions came up about what the approved plan was for Costco, so I provided you the 2003 site traffic circulation and parking lot plan for Costco that was approved in 2003. And then finally, there is the draft resolution for the commission's consideration.
Okay.
So, the building is... Okay, I'm sorry.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2904, 130 Elm Street, special use permit for a Panera Bread restaurant in a BR zone, Brixmore, GA, Freshwater State Line LLC. Owner applicant, map 657, lot 329, BR zone. Charles Durin.
You can break them and bring them up. Yes, I'm sorry.
He's here. Charles Ladd. Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Sarah Gruber.
Here.
And Richard Suzak's here.
I just didn't want you all standing. It's by your room at the desk, and all you have to do is use the microphones. All right. Okay. If you would, please identify yourselves for the record.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Brixmor, GA, Freshwater State Line LLC, which is the owner of Freshwater State Line Plaza, which is located at 130 Elm Street. The property consists of just under 44 acres, is located in a BR zone, and is currently approved with Home Depot, Costco, Jo-Ann Fabrics, and TGI Fridays, as well as some other retailers. This is a special permit and site plan application to add a 4,480 square foot Panera restaurant with outdoor dining and a drive-thru on a separate pad just north of the main drive aisle. As you know, Panera is located across the street at Enfield Square. That lease is expiring and Panera would very much like to maintain its presence in Enfield with a brand-new building, with a drive-thru to help it remain competitive and to retain its 60 loyal employees. As far as zoning applications go, this one is extremely straightforward and certainly the town has lots of experience with restaurants with drive-throughs on pad sites. Roger has been very generous with his time and his thoughts and the layout of the building, the drive-thru, and the landscaping have benefited from his input. In fact, his memo from May 12th, and I think in probably the resolution, indicates that there's a consensus on the building elevations, the location of the patio, area circulation, and the location of the drive-thru. So we, again, want to extend our appreciation to Roger for his thoughts. The center currently complies with all of your bulk standards and will continue to comply with all of your bulk standards with the addition of the Panera, including the parking requirements. I know that in some of the memos, there was some discussion regarding parking requirements. I just want to take you through a quick history of the site.
If you could, please, I really wanted the identification. I mean, I guess now you're into it, but I'll have to let you go, but I'd ask for the three people there for the names and addresses.
Sure. If I can just get through this and then I'll, I'll identify everyone who's going to be speaking. Is that okay?
Well, okay. I just...
So, so with regard to parking, in July of 1998, the ZBA granted a variance to park the entire center at a ratio of 3.45 per thousand. And that was before Costco was located at the site. Then in April of 1999...
Can you repeat that number again, please?
Sure. In, in July of 1998, the variance was granted to park the entire center at a ratio of 3.45 spaces per thousand square feet of retail. And that was before Costco.
Thank you.
And then in April of 1999, TGI Fridays was approved, and that was also parked at a ratio of 3.45 per thousand. In May of 2003, a variance was granted to park Costco at a ratio of 4.6 per thousand and at the same time, they granted a variance for impervious coverage to 70%. In July of 2003, Costco received the approval from the Year in the Welling Commission regarding the current configuration of the parking field and all the grassed parking areas. Later that same month, in July of 2003, the approval by this commission for Costco, including the existing drive aisle, the parking lot layouts, and the grass parking spaces and the current parking configuration. And regards of how you calculate parking, whether you utilize today's numbers, the numbers historically, or some sort of combination, we will comply with your parking requirements. We comply now, we will, we will continue to comply upon the construction of Panera. And we can go through the parking table a little bit further. But with me tonight are several people who will be presenting with you. One is Tom Hawley, who's the owner of this Panera. He's located across the street and he wants to, you know, express his extreme desire to continue to operate here in Enfield. Jim Bernardino, who's a professional engineer with Boulder Engineering. We have Jason Adams, who's a professional engineer with McMahon Associates, who will be discussing traffic. And we have David Babney, who's a licensed architect with NOR Architects. So first is going to be Tom Hawley.
Yep. So I just want to thank you very much for giving, giving us this time. I, I am one of the owners of Hawley Bread Group. I have a couple partners. And we've been in business for, we started our company 18 years ago. We had no restaurants then, but we now have 28. And they are located in Connecticut, Rhode Island, and a little bit of southeast Massachusetts. And I thought it might be helpful, I hope it is, if I just spoke very briefly, just give you a little context of who we are and why this is so important to us. So as I said, we, our company has been around for 18 years, but we've been in Enfield for the last 15 years. And we have really appreciated that. I don't know how often people from the town get thanked for the privilege of doing business in communities, but it has been very important to us to be able to serve customers in Enfield. And it's been, it's something that we want to be able to continue to do. As was mentioned, our lease is expiring where we currently are. This, this project, the one that you're considering, is very, very important to us to be able to stay here. And so in that regard, you know, you might ask, well, why aren't we staying where we are? Why are, why are we willing to spend all this money to create a new cafe when basically we could stay put? But as I think all of us know, it's very important that businesses continue to innovate and to meet up with their customers where they're going. And our customers today want something very different than when we first opened our Enfield Cafe. The building at the Freshwater Plaza is going to allow us to provide them what they are now looking for. And our present location at the mall just simply doesn't do that any longer. So what we want to do is we want to once again invest in a way that we can present to our customers the very latest designs that Panera have. They're very attractive. This is something that's really important to us. We take a lot of pride in our cafes. And I think that with Roger's help and, and we've gone through, as he might tell you, many iterations on our plan in terms of how the building was positioned, what it looks like, how it's going to interact with the street. And I really do believe that for all of that, we've come up with something that I think, I know we will be proud of, and I think it will add to the streetscape there. And it's going to be a design that's, you know, going to focus, be able for us to focus on the core essence of our brand, which is really our bakery. We bake fresh every day. And to provide an environment which our customers can be really comfortable again staying there. And I think that over the years, we've lost a little bit of that at our present location, so I'm very excited about being able to do that once again. In terms of what the new cafe will allow us to do, and I mentioned how customers change their attitudes about what they want and what they expect, our business has just been completely changed, really in the last five years, let alone the last 15. And right now, you know, a few years ago, I would have said that there will never be a Panera with a drive-thru. I didn't see how that was going to work. Well, in fact, it does work. And today, we will not build a new cafe unless it has a drive-thru. So that's just how much these things have changed and how much our customers expect that of us. If you're in our cafe, you have no idea that there's a drive-thru there, but it is a convenience that many people now expect. Mobile ordering is something that wasn't available when we opened our Enfield Cafe. Panera has a pretty robust mobile ordering system. And in effect, what we've done is we've given cash registers to anybody who wants one. If you have a smartphone, you can place your order on that phone. The order can be ready for you when you walk in the cafe. And whereas a few years ago, that didn't exist, today, over 30% of our business is now coming through in that kind of way. And we need to have a cafe that in terms of production and the way in which it operates can support it. And our current cafe doesn't really do that for us any longer. The McDonald's presentations that were here before, the gentleman from Enfield who got up and spoke was asking, I think, about the kiosk. And I'd like to encourage him to come to Panera Bread when, when you approve this project, because we're not going to have one kiosk, we'll have multiple kiosks there. They've become increasingly popular. Again, it's another option for our customers so that they can order without going to the cashier or standing in line if they don't want to. And it records all your favorites, it makes it very easy, so it's just one more thing that this new cafe will allow us to offer. And then there's catering and there's delivery. And while we do that in our existing cafe, once again, the new cafe will be set up better for us to, to be able to accommodate that. So the competitive landscape has changed for us. What we need to offer our customers in Enfield has changed, and I'm really excited about this location as, as a way of doing that. But in addition to the cafe and the appearance that it will have, the way in which it will function, the services we can provide, I think it's important to mention that if we were able to do this and we're able to stay in Enfield, that we're able to continue the employment of approximately 60 people. In fact, a few more people than currently are employed in our existing cafe. So that has always been important to us. We employ 1,300 people in our, in our company. That's always been a very important thing to create those opportunities and to also be able to give back to the communities in which we operate. Panera has a very strong, and I know our own company has a very strong feeling about that. We will operate seven days a week, as we do now. We'll be Monday through Thursday, 6:30 to 9:30. On Fridays and Saturdays, it'll be 6:30 to 10:30, and on Sundays, it'll be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And so I just want to, I know that, that your primary concerns are the regulations and the requirements under your zoning ordinance. I have a great deal of respect for that and for the work that you do. I know in my town, I was, I served on our planning board for five years. I was also on our Board of Selectmen for nine years. I'm very committed to that and to the work that's being done to kind of protect and enhance communities. So I really appreciate that, and I, I hope that you will feel like what we're doing is something that you could be proud of as a community and that will add value. And the only, the last thing I would say is, I mentioned that our lease is expiring, so while those other considerations you have obviously are in the forefront, timing for us is very important. So I would just, as a businessperson, I would just ask that whatever you can do in that regard, I just want you to know how much it would be appreciated. Thank you.
I think I can speak loud enough to get into that. Thank you. My name's Jim Bernardino with Boulder Engineering. I'm going to run through the site plan briefly with everybody before I turn it over to our traffic consultant to give an outline or a brief description of some of the traffic studies that have been done for the project. Just to give everybody a quick overview and locus, I'm sure everybody's aware of the site. We are an existing 44-acre plus-or-minus parcel that's located at the southwest corner of Elm Street and Freshwater Boulevard. We are part of the Freshwater Plaza, which is currently housed with a number of, you know, high-profile retailers such as the Costco, the Home Depot, TGI Fridays, and the like. Our, our proposal is for the Panera, obviously, but it will be situated basically almost in the middle of the plaza. What we've done is we looked at situating our development in an area that is non-disruptive to the existing operations of the current plaza. You'll see that we are located centrally in the overall development, but we are far further away to the most outskirts towards Freshwater Boulevard and are located near primary entrances to the, to the site. Currently, the site is accessed by a number of points. Off of Freshwater Boulevard, there's an entrance in, I'll see if I can point on the screen. There's an entrance in, which is primarily for service vehicles, delivery vehicles, to enter the back of the property for deliveries. Along Freshwater Boulevard, we have a right-in, right-out restricted access. Further down, where our current property is located, or the pad, preparat, the pad site, there's a right-in, right-out access. As we go further down south along Freshwater Boulevard, there is an exit only. And further down, there's another signalized intersection leading over to the Costco. I'll go into the zoomed-in view. Now, this is a, just a colored rendering of the proposed development that we are currently proposing. As I mentioned previously, we are situated further away from the primary retail facility located along Freshwater Boulevard. Oh, I apologize. And, and off the main entranceway, which is a signalized intersection. This will allow for customers to access the proposed Panera site with no interruption to the existing shopping plaza. Presently, the area that we're in, that is being developed to house the Panera is currently just a paved parking field. What's being proposed is we're going to introduce some landscape islands to basically box around the perimeter of the Panera pad. You know, this will allow for us to screen, not only to Freshwater Boulevard, but to screen some landscaping to the adjacent shopping plaza as well. Now, the requirement for us, we were required to lose 108 parking spaces as a result of introducing this Panera to this site. That reduces the overall parking from 1,903 spaces that are currently existing on the site down to 1,795. As Mr. Nuff previously went over very briefly, you know, we are proposing to be complying with all the bulk requirements as well as the, the parking regulations. So that in itself constitutes, you know, an acceptable parking configuration and an acceptable reduction in the existing parking facility to support this project. As I mentioned, we do have a main access drive coming into the Panera facility from the main access drive to the overall plaza. And in front of the Panera facility, we have 54 parking spaces that are, if you want to consider that, you know, what will be utilized for the main operations of the building. Associated with the Panera is also a drive-thru, which will house 13 queuing spaces to allow for backup and the continued operations during the busy times. During staff review, we've received comments from various members. What we've done is we've introduced what they call an escape lane. So if you change your mind, you forgot your wallet, there's an opportunity to get out of that drive-thru lane without impeding other customers or having to jump a curb. As part of the Panera, we've also introduced an outdoor patio area for 32 spaces. That's going to be fully landscaped with very aesthetic amenities such as some sitting benches and architectural features for the tables and the like that are outside. To touch base, we are, on the overall size of the building, we're approximately 4,400 square feet of a building footprint, which obviously will house not only the patron area, but also the kitchen and service requirements. We've also provided a trash enclosure, which is proposed to be a, treated with a brick facade to, or, to match the existing architecture features, which can be further elaborated later on when NOR describes the, the building features. But the, I want to touch base on how that dumpster enclosure was actually situated. That was located to provide some aesthetic separation, not only from Freshwater Boulevard in the main entranceway, so that the main traffic that's circulating around the shopping plaza, you know, is screened from the, you know, screened from the dumpster enclosure. In that back area, you're also, it's also, you'll see, it's also flanked by a couple of landscape islands, which provides some buffering and visual separation from the other parking facilities associated with the remaining retail area of the property. Just to run through the overall comprehensive engineering set of plans that we put together, we did do a comprehensive grading and drainage plan for the site. We evaluated the drainage characteristics, which currently just sheflow across a very large, open, paved area. We are introducing, obviously, some obstructions, meaning curbs and buildings. So we were required to, or it, as part of the design, it was needed to introduce a couple of additional catch basins. So we introduced some drainage infrastructures that are DOT, specified DOT standard requirements to collect the existing runoff as it approaches the site, and we're connecting it to the site's existing drainage system. Overall, we have a very minor reduction in the overall stormwater discharging from the site as a result of this project, as, as a result of us introducing all those additional landscape areas. We're about 7,700 square feet of new green space being introduced to the site. So ultimately, that doesn't change the overall large percentage of impervious on the site, but it does change, obviously, the characteristics with the addition of new landscaped areas. obviously, the characteristics with the addition of new landscaped areas. All public utilities are available in the site. We did receive some initial feedbacks from the Water Pollution Control Authority. We've been coordinating with Connecticut Water for water service. We've been in touch with the gas providers as well. Proposed services at this point are going to be connected to the existing services being supplied to the shopping center at their entrance off of Elm Street. There's no direct utilities in Freshwater Boulevard, but a short 1,000-feet distance plus or minus away, we are going to be able to connect into all public utilities, gas, water, electric, and sewer. Obviously, to address construction-related activities, we developed a comprehensive stormwater and erosion and sediment control plan, silt fence, hay bales, silsacks on existing catch basins, and the like. So, we've addressed ongoing construction activity potential impacts by implementing this plan. And lastly, we've also introduced a comprehensive set of construction permits, construction details, which obviously will outline characteristics and protocol for the actual construction activities. So, pretty well-defined as it relates to that. Again, I'm touched real quickly on landscaping, but we did put a comprehensive landscape plan together with, obviously, details, not only the corridor that I mentioned about establishing the limits of the proposed pad, but we also have a very comprehensive proposal for landscaping directly adjacent to the building, as well as the patio area, because obviously, we want to screen that, make that as aesthetic as possible for the future patrons of this development. You know, with that, that is, you know, the site plan's in a nutshell, and the development as it relates to the civil engineering aspect. We're going to head onto architecture?
Yeah.
Beautiful. So, we're going to introduce Dave Babnig from NOR Architecture. He's going to touch base on what he's pulled together thus far.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Just want to really briefly touch on the architecture of the building. We're really excited to work on this project, because Panera's really evolved over the years, and now with the focus on good, clean food, we wanted to also have the architecture accentuate that. So, we've selected a variety of different materials that are a very natural palette. As you can see there, we have a number of masonry materials that we're introducing to the site, that we wanted to really tie in the colors of the center. So, we're using a variety of tans, browns, and a white brick to accentuate the entrance. With the entrance being kind of in a corner of the site, we wanted to really pop it out of the main building and accentuate it with a series of large glass windows, in addition to adding some canopies to protect all the customers from any weather. So... The building form was specifically chosen so that it has good visibility from a distance, but also has an approachability from a pedestrian level to encourage people to walk up to the site. With the addition of the large patio space, we feel that it's accomplishing that just from the, from a scale of the building. In addition to that, accent lighting is provided throughout the site, as well as throughout the building, giving a really warm feel to the building at night, as well as improving safety during off-hours, and it'll really showcase a lot of the accents that are in the building. So, I touched on the materials briefly. There's a wainscoting that's circling the building, and that's in that oyster gray that you see with a cap of the dark gray, and then the Aspen White is used as the kind of entry element. All of the storefront glass is going to be framed with dark bronze metal, as well as the canopies themselves. The rest of the building will be an ephes painted an off-white color, not complementing the surrounding center, and then we have some of the brand-standard green in the awnings as fabric. On the interior of the site, as you enter the store, the first thing that we wanted to really present to the customer is the bakery. The bakery is such a crucial part of Panera. It's fresh bread, fresh pastries, and that's the first thing that you see. You have two flanking bakery towers with fresh bagels, fresh bread, and then you also have kiosks, six of them, to serve customers during high demand, or just customers not wanting to order directly face-to-face. The dining room is split up into several soft seating zones, trying to maintain a cozy feel without impacting the use of the space. So, you have three main zones, kind of right as you enter.
Can you tell me, just, and the people, what direction are we looking at at that building? Is that turned any special way?
Which way is north?
That building, if you want to relate it to the site plan?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like, just tell me which way is north. I can figure it out.
The north facade is the top right here.
Okay. All right.
It's on the left hand.
So, you enter from the southeast corner, right here, in the vestibule, and you enter straight in, and you'll be greeted by six kiosks.
Okay.
And then the actual kind of point-of-sale stations there, with flanking bakery towers showing, showcasing the baked goods. And you'll see directly into the, basically, the bakery, and there'll be a baker's table as well, where you can see preparations of fresh baked goods. Cold and hot drinks will be served right adjacent to it, and there'll be a community table, which offers combined seating for, at a high-top level. And then there's also a variety of four tops and two tops dispersed throughout the space. There's a patio door that leads out into the patio, which offers additional seating, and then the kitchen space and restrooms are all kind of towards the rear of the space or the north side of the space. Here are just the black-and-white elevations, showing basically the same information that I already walked through. And then we also prepared a site photometric, just showcasing all of the lighting that we mentioned.
So, the building's on slab, on grade?
Correct. Yeah, there's no basement. It's a slab-on-grade building.
Do you happen to know if there's a speaker in the outside patio? Because I know there is one in the mall, Panera.
Currently, we would be adding a speaker, unless there's regulations against it.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to the patio, the patio then is on grade, and we, there was no drawing of the patio, so I don't know, and there were two large squares. Could you tell me what those large squares are on the drawing? We had no...
Large square on the site plan?
No, but...
I think they're landscaping islands.
Yeah, those would be landscaping islands, and then...
See, there was no, no elevations. I mean, there was no drawings that I could find. I talked to the planner today, if you filed them, or I'd missed them. I'd missed the arrows.
Yeah. It's shown on plan as L.A., which, but if you look at the landscaping plan, sheet 11, you can sort of see that.
That is correct. Yeah, it's a landscaped area to break up, so we don't have a large expanse of concrete patio.
Also, that's, that's not part of the patio, or...
We're basically enclosing the patio in kind of a landscaped area, so that, you know, customers can kind of feel a little bit more, you know, not like they're in...
So, the patio would go around the...
No, the patio's over here, and there's greenery here, 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 and here.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted a separate, a separate plan for the patio. I had no way of figuring out what that, what those were.
I think if I could help out here, is that the regulations in 520.2F actually provide that you're supposed to submit samples of the furniture. There's a whole list of things that you would have to do as a condition of approval that you haven't submitted. So, that's why the commission is like asking for that information.
Understood. Yeah, we can provide that information.
So, as they come in off the sidewalk from, from Freshwater, they would walk just on grade level right onto the patio?
The patio is going to be separated from basically the circulation path with landscaped islands and curbs.
No, but the sidewalk shown from Freshwater Boulevard in goes right up to the patio.
Goes up to the patio, and it also shows us a ramp.
And it shows a ramp. That's why I, I thought it was not on, on grade. I didn't, wasn't... And one of the ones also showed at the handicap parking, there was a ramp up, so I, it doesn't look like it's on grade.
From the, I'm sorry, I got this on. I just want to make sure I...
Just have to identify yourself.
Again, Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering. If we're looking at the... I'm not good without a mouse. I apologize.
I got...
11.
Patio, well, number five shows a patio ramp, and it doesn't say a fence. And six is a handicap access.
If you look at sheet number six, that's not a ramp. It goes from 131.
There seems to be that the architectures of the patio and your site plan don't match up.
Well, that's a ramp.
I know. It showed a ramp. That's why I thought it wasn't on grade.
Yeah, but it's ever so slight. It's only six inches.
Yeah, what, I can explain that, and obviously, that's an easy coordination item to make sure that our architecture features are matching up the civil site plans. You know, as things were getting developed, architects made sure that the patio was very architecturally pleasing, and it functioned with all of their amenities that they wanted to implement. Then I was challenged with the, with the task of grading it out and making sure it all worked. So, you know, with that, what we have is, at the handicap parking area, it is a flush condition, meaning handicap accessible would come into the patio area, and there'll be a gentle grade leading up to the finished door. So, there's no ramp.
No ramp, huh?
But when you do look on the western side of the parking stalls, you'll see a symbol that looks like a ramp.
Yep.
So, what we did was, we introduced a ramp on that other side. It is ADA compliant, but that's not the route that everybody's going to be taking. That's just to blend into the patio quicker, so that all of the tree wells that are there don't have awkward slopes going across them and the like. So, it was really, it was really a task of handicap accessible blending into these tree wells that are there that aren't going to have ridiculously, you know, weird slopes going across them. So, all in all, it's, it works out very well, but when you look at it, there's really no technical ramp that, for the accessible route that's necessary. The ramp was more to match up to the grades quickly, so that all of the landscaping tree boxes, the tree wells that are there blend very well into the patio with, because everybody likes a flat patio. So, we try to minimize any types of slopes across that.
You don't, you don't call up any, any topo numbers, but you, in two places, you say proposed ramp, one out on the street, and then one at the door. So, the word "ramp" is there twice, and I think that's the concern.
You know what? I do apologize.
It's all right. I just...
Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. There, there is a ramp. I do apologize. I'm going to take a step back. So, there's a step that's built into the, or adjacent to one of the tree boxes that are there. So, there is a handicap accessible ramp off of the end of those parking stalls. Obviously, there is a six-inch ramp up with the flare-out section. So, as you go up, we're going to be a maximum 1 in 12, the side slope, which will only be on one side, will be 1 in 10. We do provide the detectable strips along the entire, the front of the handicap stalls as well. We made that change when we moved the parking stalls. We had...
I have a question along that line, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
No, go ahead.
On the, it looks like that you get out of the handicap stall, and you're going, you're going towards the drive-thru, and the door to the building is right there, and it looks like there's no protection for either pedestrian or wheelchair to your drive-thru line, lane, and that's why I brought in the proposed resolution for the commission, that you, you need to put some protection in there, either, you know, wood barrier or something. But it looks like, you know, I'm saying, you don't show anything there. It looks like you just have a walkway, and you got a wheelchair.
And a wheelchair ramp. Because along the front, we have bollards along the front for protection.
Talking about along the side.
Along the side, yes.
There's no, there's no barrier between I'm walking or I'm in a wheelchair, and I got cars in the drive-thru.
Yep. Understandable. There is a grass area between the two, and we have a ramp down leading to the crosswalk that ultimately leads out to the public way.
So, that's what, that's what we, well, I was going to say, because being, well, having problems distance-walking.
I think we need a better detail on how the wheelchair gets from the handicap thing into the building, and the separation between it and the drive-thru.
Well, we could discuss that quickly. Obviously, there's two areas that we look at handicap accessible. Obviously, we have the parking stalls, which have a ramp, and they have a direct shot across the...
Is there any way to put that, well, you can talk, and we're looking at a map, but it would help if it's, the public is also watching.
I apologize.
You just don't show anything. You show crosswalk going across the drive-thru, but then you don't show, if I'm, if I'm going in, you don't show any separation whatsoever in your, on your drawing on sheet five.
It's five and six that I was in trouble with.
When you say separation, Roger, you meaning, I want to understand what you're...
Well, it just, if you look at that... It appears as though you've got the walkway, and then you've got the drive-thru, and there's nothing there. I mean, I'd be looking for a wood guardrail or something, so that a car doesn't wander out of the drive-thru and pick off a pedestrian or a wheelchair trying to go in and out of the building, but...
There is a, the drive-thru is curbed on both sides, and there is a break in the curb for the, for the sidewalk to come through across the crosswalk, which is identified, and we've also implemented a stop bar and a condition there. So, as the exiting traffic, if you look at sheet 5.0 on the enlarged plan, there's actually a 12-foot wide drive aisle exiting the drive-thru.
I'm on the other side. Would the cars start through the drive-thru?
The cars drive through the drive-thru?
Off of the building.
Yeah, that is a, okay, that's understandable. Going through. That is a...
There's a step.
Talking to them, not me.
That's not at grade. That's a step.
Yep. There's a step at the thing. That is not considered an accessible route. What we did was, we provided a route to supply the other parking stalls in the shopping plaza. So, if someone comes out of one of the stores, they could obviously walk through the parking lot and gain a defined access point to the store, even though it's not quote-unquote "an accessible route." We're providing our accessible, we're meeting our accessible requirements by, one, providing parking stalls directly in front of our building with an accessible route to the store.
If you put this, which number?
Number five.
Put sheet five up for us, and if you take a handicap person and park them in the first stall up where the, where the drive-thru starts.
Right here. They park right in the first stall, right here.
Yeah.
Right, there's a ramp right here.
Okay.
They're going to walk across the patio, enter, enter the door. They are not going to cross the drive aisle for the drive-thru.
So, they go directly onto the patio, which is at grade level?
At grade level with, you have to go up a six-inch ramp from the parking to the patio.
All right. But there's no barriers in between. It's just...
There's no barriers in between. What we've done is, we provided some protection, protective bollards, so cars don't drive up and...
It's just a slope you're talking about.
Exactly. It's just a slope, an accessible slope.
Do the regulations require that you only, you only exit a patio, that you have to enter the patio through the building?
You have to enter the patio?
Yeah, and you, and you have an exit only from the patio to the street. So, if you're saying that the handicap person has to go through the patio to get into the building, then you're going to have to rework that.
We could rework that and speak with the architect to lay that out. Obviously, the patio is very large, and we've identified the seating area. We're not proposing to fence that in... We're not proposing to fence that in at this point or anything like that. But we could definitely show a clear path from the accessible route that will not, you know, impede on the patio area.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
Instead of this, you've got to enter here, come out here.
Oh, yeah.
So if you, if you take a look at, if I can explain it a little bit more. The handicap, the accessible route, where I'm drawing my little mouse going through. This area all up in here, as you come up the ramp, is a, we don't call it a patio. We'll call it an accessible route to the building. It's concrete and it has some sitting benches. Now, that area from where I have my mouse, from here, from where everybody accessed, down is the patio.
Right. Right, that's what he's talking about. That's why we, we needed that design that we didn't have.
We could definitely provide a little more detail and explanation as to where it, where it lies. I'm very confident that we could address the concerns of separating those, you know, distinct paths of travel.
Is it too much of a deal that we couldn't put it in condition to work with you on that?
What I was suggesting is on 15, you had 15A, which is say, the patio must comply with 5.20.2F. And then they can rework it and submit it.
I guess, I'm not a huge fan of having conditions of approval that get recorded on the land records that say, please work with a person or please do something in the future.
No, what happened, Commissioner, is that these are the conditions of approval. But then when the final drawings come in, the special permit that the secretary signs, you may have revised drawings. For example, on here, the applicant submitted drawings that say dated X point XX point XX. Obviously, we wouldn't be filing this on the land records that way, so-
But it's a change in the, in the site plan and it's a change that we haven't seen. I mean, I understand, not all this can happen instantaneously when we talk about it.
Certainly up to you, how you want to do it.
Yeah, I could assure, you know, the commission that I think this modification to the patio that would happen is more clarification than a site plan modification.
Yeah.
Obviously, we do have the accessible paths and I think it's just more of showing and clarifying that. I don't think you'll see any type of, I don't think you see any substantial modifications. It's going to be more of, if anything, we might shift the table, just so that we can identify those separate areas to the satisfaction of staff or whoever you ultimately assign the further review of this.
Well, if the entire patio is not fenced in, what separates the patio from the sidewalks, from that walkway into the building?
Nothing, that's-
Right, so, I mean, is it a regulation that there has to be fenced in with no alcohol?
They don't have alcohol. If they had alcohol, they'd have to have it fenced in.
Right, so it doesn't have to be fenced in?
No.
So how do you put an exit only from a patio?
Well, you have-
With no fence?
They could, for the handicapped, you could just take that part, I think he said, and put a fence across that section.
Well, that's what I'm getting. If they just did a railing or a fence, that little, and kind of directed your walkway-
That's, that's fine.
Nothing else is fenced, but if that's all it takes, it's a simple solution.
Yeah. Commissioner, you're right. The regulations don't require a fence or the exit only if it's not, if they're not serving alcohol out there. So, if that's a condition-
Well, that's why I said that, that we could leave it, but-
Right, well, he had brought up the JAF to have an exit only and, well, there's no fence, so.
They can leave with a coffee, they just can't leave with a cocktail.
Absolutely.
I'm just looking at this openness. I kind of think it's more in the liking of what we're trying to get that more pedestrian, yeah, I don't want it fenced there.
I think it's beautiful. Go sit down on a nice bean.
Yeah, have a nice cup of coffee.
And what we've tried to do with the designs is not encapsulate someone that's in a cage. So what we've done was we enhanced the landscaping around that with the tree wells. So typically, you don't see facilities with trees right in the front of the building.
Once I find out what the tree wells were, I think it's pretty-
Could you do it with texture in a sidewalk, in terms of, you know, just a little bit of, you know, something could be smooth and something could be a little more-
A different texture or score pattern?
Right, yeah, just a score pattern, you know, a tighter score pattern might sort of, you know-
I think we could do that, I don't, without much of a problem. Our landscape architect is very nifty, so he comes up with very creative ideas. So I'm sure we can come up with something that would be aesthetically pleasing to both Panera as well as, you know, acceptable to, you know, to the staff and to the commission.
I have a question about the landscape islands that sort of cage, oh, separate the Panera from the rest of the parking lot. Was there ever, I don't know the history of this, of these plans, but was there ever a proposal to have just one island rather than, you know, four separate entrances where people come down and then all turn? Because that, that's tough for me.
That was part of what we looked at as the overall site and how it actually is cohesive with the remaining development. Obviously, if you put in a long landscape island, there's two things that happen. One, you're restricting access through everybody. You're going to be introducing another parallel cut-through island that people come through. You're restricting, you know, interconnection between the development. Obviously, there's going to be customers that want to access both sides. So we thought that, you know, saving the parking spaces and allowing for that continuity with the remaining plaza was more of a benefit than separating the two.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like it now, now they found out what the patio and got the right thing. That's the problem with me going at the, like Panera's now, is the distance of walking. It's a little bit difficult for you to get in there.
I know, I think the applicant, you were going to do a traffic presentation at some point. I did have a question about the-
The finish of the building?
Absolutely, sorry.
Well, did traffic last, I guess?
I have one question, in terms of your trash enclosure. In terms of, you know, obviously, you have access for the trucks to take the trash out on the backside of the trash enclosure. But, you know, I guess the access for the cleaning crew that gets into the container, it looks like the door opens into their path of, you know, as they approach the trash compactor, the door opens towards them? You know, would it be wiser to swing it away from them, so that when they're walking, they walk strictly in versus-
I think the goal was not to swing it out into a traveled path. Let me just take a look, though. If we can make that change, it's relatively simple. No, I think we could definitely make that modification. Re-hinge the door, open it up, so you don't have to close the door to get back in.
Yeah, so that you don't have to, you know, get, you push everything past it and then come back and open the door and then, you know, pull yourself through, so that when you open the door and you go straight through.
No, I agree with you, that's, I-
Because, because I know you touched briefly on the drainage system, being the fact that, you know, and again, I sort of was going to ask you to explain that, but you didn't mention the fact that there's sheet flow to the two catch basins that you're connecting to right now.
Yes.
You don't have them connected, you know, there's catch basin, I guess, north and catch basin south, but on the east side of the, you know, the area that you're working with. And those are sized all according to, you know, the amount of volume of water that's going to be going through there?
Yes.
Because, again, you don't have any sizes of any of your pipes, so that, you know, if I see, you know, an eight-inch, you know, if the outlet is an eight-inch and you've got a 12-inch coming into an eight-inch that's going out, you know, there's no sizing there that-
We do have, currently, you know, our proposed pipes actually do have sizes on them. So what we're connecting into is obviously piping sizes that are all larger than what's there presently. We're not changing any volume or rate of flow going to that existing system. So what we did was, we took a look at the sizing of the pipes, you know, what we're cutting off and collecting. How big do those pipes have to be? And then we compared it to what's out there today. And obviously, what's out there today is bigger, at least one pipe size bigger than what we're proposing to connect.
Because I guess the thing is, and again, I don't totally understand, you know, the flow of water. But before, if I had water falling adjacent to Freshwater Boulevard, it would take a while for it to, you know, actually flow all the way to that catch basin. Now, all of a sudden, you're connecting it a lot sooner and then you're piping it, you know. So basically, you have water that's used to fall and have five minutes to get to the catch basin. Now it falls and goes into a pipe and only takes three minutes to get to that catch basin.
To talk about it, it's very little-
Does that get addressed?
No, I can explain that and try to make it simple, in non-engineering terms. The flow that's going, existing today, is really generated from the pavement area. You know, not much of Freshwater Boulevard or even the grassed area is flowing to this system. So you're talking a matter of a minute, a minute and a half for that travel to go across the pavement, existing conditions. So all we're doing is, we're cutting it off halfway, putting it in a pipe. So rather than a minute of travel time, you may be looking at 45 seconds of travel time. So, and as a whole, this is a very large drainage system for a 40-acre site. You're not going to notice that. Generally, if you change flow paths-
Well, I'm just sort of thinking that one outlet, that everything gets collected to, it's going to get there faster now. And so that the pipe has to get, you know, rid of more water a little quicker than it used to.
Well, when you look at it this way, there's twofold. Because when you look at engineering-wise, that pipe is also getting a lot of water from upstream as well that we're connecting into. That gets there in 10 minutes. So our flow is getting there sooner and getting out of the way before the big slug comes through. So there's many different ways to look at this. And, you know, looking at it, knowing that at the end of the day, we're reducing what's going there today. You know, it may get there a little bit faster, but it's also a little bit less getting there. And it's only a matter of seconds.
As long as it was considered, you know, like you said, I see one pipe in and one pipe out, you know, and so, you know-
And just, you know, we did put together a drainage memorandum, you know, outlining our methods, assumptions and the like. Provided that with our submission. We didn't get any negative feedback from the engineering staff, you know, on their review on that. So I would assume that everything we put together is acceptable. Pretty straightforward, you know, we're in development, in the middle of a paved area already. So as far as the drainage impacts, you know, very confident to say that there are none.
Anyone else? Kenny?
Mr. Chairman, before we leave the topic of the building and the patio and the furniture, we would hate to have this continued merely because we didn't supply a description or pictures of the patio furniture. So if we could, we'll provide at least an oral description and hopefully that is satisfactory to the commission. So in the hopes of, if we have a chance of closing tonight and getting a vote, we wouldn't want that to be held up by virtue of the oversight of not providing, you know, photographs or other evidence regarding the exterior furniture.
Well, that's up to the commission, so we'll have to see what develops. You can do that, if you do it and they accept it, that's up to these-
Well, I guess I have a comment about stuff I'd want to see. I mean, just learning tonight about the other variances that I think the applicant would like us to consider for parking. I don't know if it's proper to consider. All I know is that our staff memo and the Exhibit A that we got on parking calculations don't take into account the numerous variances and special permits. So I would like to see those. I also note that the resolution that we were given just this evening, which I would have liked, I understand this is moving, I would have liked more time to consider the conditions there and all the references inside. But even then, even the first warehouse says, this is an application to modify an approved special permit. If that's true and we are approving, we're modifying an approved special permit, I would have liked to see the special permit in my packet to know what- I mean, I understand that this is a new application and I think it's, I think it's a new application. But I want to see all of the historical background that lead to what's happening on this plaza.
I'm willing, because I talked to Roger earlier. It's up to the commission is to have a special meeting, and we have several. If they have, they can get things together. It depends on how it goes. I don't know how the other people are going to go. As long as I can get four people together, they can resubmit at that time and have a special meeting another night. We've always done that because, you know, we can accommodate-
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, there are seven regular members here, so neither of the alternates are voting, right?
No, no.
So Sarah wouldn't be voting?
I know that, but the thing is, it's up to, not up to me.
Well, so far, I haven't heard anything that's going to stop me from voting tonight. I mean, picking out their patio furniture, I personally don't think it's part of our purview. I know it can be, but it shouldn't be. And, you know, here's this business-
Well, the other stuff is small change, as far as the patio goes and the way the handicap get in there. That can be taken care of.
That, I agree, all, but that can be solved tonight.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know?
So, let's continue, you can do the oral, too.
And by the way, as for the parking, the important thing is that regardless of how you calculate it, we will continue to comply. Whether you, whether we rely upon the original variance of-
Could we continue on the building and just take care of that, please? And we'll do parking last, I said that before. Don't interrupt the rest of this.
Yeah, I might as well just explain the patio furniture, just so we have it out there.
Well, yes, go ahead.
It's metal furniture that's painted or finished green color. And then the tables are a metal base with a wood slat top that's a teak finish. And that's all weather resistant, it won't rust over time, and it's pretty high quality and it looks good.
Are they anchored?
They are not anchored, they are free-floating and movable.
So what do you plan to do with them in the wintertime?
They get, they'll be removed and stored.
All right, well, let's-
Are there umbrellas on the tables?
Umbrellas are not proposed currently, just due to the canopy, but we do have an umbrella option as possible.
Just concerned about the wind, I mean-
Of course.
Especially after two nights ago or whatever.
Well, yeah, they'll have to take care of them, they'll have to have somebody do that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be mostly a building maintenance issue and, yeah, definitely, the umbrellas are generally secured when it's not operating.
Basically, in the wintertime and or in cold weather, well, from certain, certain time of the year, it'll be empty, the patio.
Correct. And by the way, the current existing Panera at Anfield Square also has an outdoor patio, so-
It does, right, it's very small, yeah.
So the operator has, first of all, they own 28 other Paneras, so they have vast experience.
Well, I don't, they don't bring those in in the winter, though, I don't believe. Seems to me, I've been out there. They are, okay.
Okay, so we're good on furniture?
Yes.
Okay.
And the design, and now that I know what the big boxes were?
Okay.
Yeah, how to get in there, fine.
All right, so I think we're on to traffic, is that correct?
Well, I don't know, that's up to you, if that's where you are.
Okay, but if we're done with the building, we're done with furniture, I think traffic is-
I noticed the fire department wanted hydrants moved to a certain location. Has that been done?
Yes, we have provided a response to comment memo and we have addressed all of the staff comments, fire, WPCA, all those things have been addressed with the revised plans.
Right, there were pipe sizes, I read, there were certain pipe sizes were different than-
Yes, those have been corrected on the revised plans.
Thank you.
I think there was one item, I don't know if you had specifically addressed it, it's the concrete pad underneath your dumpster.
I believe that the revised plans also depict what was requested with regard to the underbase for the, so.
Okay, if you want to do, if you're done with all that, Roger, are they covered what you needed to cover?
Right, in the draft resolution. In the draft resolution, it's an interesting thing in front of you because what you have is you have the adding a freestanding building, which you have regulations regarding that says, look at the whole site. A restaurant requires a special permit. A drive-through is not specifically called out, but the commission has traditionally done it by special permit consistent with, it's similar to what else is there. And then you have the outdoor dining requirements. So in, there were two items that were brought up with respect to the, the plan we're having to do with traffic and circulation. One is that the, your regulations require that- One is that the, your regulations require that there not be conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, and I give you the citation. There have been a lot of discussions about how to address that. I gave you the site plan tonight on the Costco building with the parking and circulation. If you look at that, and I'll just present this, and you guys are going to respond. In the, if you look at the Costco approved plan, it doesn't necessarily say that the only way you get out of that side parking lot on Costco is by going through the front entrance. You could read it that there is multiple ways to get out of that thing. So, I don't think we should necessarily say, "Well, that was what was approved," because that's not clear if you look at that approved plan from 2003. The, so, what I did in drafting the site-specific conditions is I just said a revised parking and circulation plan will be submitted that addresses the identified site issues. As you know, now on the weekends, Costco hires a police officer, and they actually close off one lane in front of the building. There's never any approval from the commission to close off a lane, so it's down to one lane moving through there. So, how that could be addressed, there are multiple options. I drafted a condition number nine that would leave it to the applicant to come back and submit something that addresses it. There have been conversations even off the record tonight as to how they might do that, so that, however they do it is fine, you know, that's sufficient to the commission. And then the second one was the issue of the left-hand turn lane, which has also been back and forth.
Excuse me, Roger? I have a couple of questions, because you're specifically talking about Costco's entrance, where this is actually further down.
Right.
And there is a stoplight there, so if I were going to go to Panera's, I would go to that entrance?
Right, no, you're absolutely right. And you could say, one could say, one could say, one could say that Panera doesn't have anything to do with Costco, except your regulations say that if you're putting another principal use on a site, that the commission is to look at the circulation for the entire thing. And so, that's why I'm suggesting that we don't hold up Panera based upon resolving the Costco issue, but I'm saying that we write, we put it in there as a condition, and the applicant has suggested, I don't know how they want to address it tonight, but they've suggested various options of how they could address that, all of which would require the State Traffic Commission to approve. So, we could, you know, we could approve it tonight, subject to whatever it is that they put forward and the commission finds acceptable. The only other question is, is the way the traffic light goes now, that police, the police traffic have suggested that they would prefer, there's a left-hand turn lane going in there, and the way it works is if you're in that left-hand turn lane, you either get a green arrow, or you get green, or you get red. And what the police traffic officer is suggesting is the green phase of that light be removed, because when you turn on the green arrow, the oncoming traffic is stopped. If you're turning on the green, it's not stopped, but it gives the driver the sense that, "Oh, I'm in a left-hand turn lane and it's green, I'm good." So, the police, the traffic is suggesting that it should either be left-hand green or red. So, that's for the commission to evaluate. And I drafted it with the police department's request, such that the applicant was responsible for the adjustment to the light to eliminate that green. It's, and again, that would require the State Traffic Commission to go along with that. So, from the standpoint of staff, the only, the only issues that remain are how do we address on the site as a whole? Because we're looking at the entire state, state line freshwater plaza, all the way from TGF Fridays to Costco. The, that circulation, and whether or not you feel that those two issues warrant being addressed. And so, I wrote a, two suggested ways to address them. The applicant will present it, and the commission should make up their own minds.
Okay, well, let's listen to them.
Okay.
That's not a state road, so why does the state have to do that?
Let's not get into that.
I will be happy to address all that.
Let them present the.
And maybe we can start with the traffic light first. We have a certificate from the Office of the State Traffic Administration. It probably, it goes back so old, it was from the State Traffic Commission. So, even if we want, even though this is not a state road, but because we have a certificate, and because we're adding square footage, we need to amend our OSTA certificates, which gives them jurisdiction over this light and all the lights associated. So, I understand Roger's proposed condition, but the problem is, is we need OSTA's approval to make this request to change. Our position is that this is a over four-hundred-thousand-square-foot center. We're adding forty-four-hundred square feet of restaurants. If there were a problem with that free-flow left-hand turn lane from freshwater into our center, given the, let's face it, two of the biggest traffic generating retailers in America, Home Depot and Costco, we would certainly know about it. We don't think that a four-thousand-square-foot Panera is going to be the proverbial straw that breaks the traffic back that is going to lead to a dangerous condition. So, and Jason can explain further what our belief is, but we don't think it's warranted. We've had candid and respectful conversations with Roger about, you know, we have a different view from him and from the police, frankly. Again, based upon many years of experience of an over four-hundred-thousand-square-foot center that we all know is quite busy. We don't think that a four-thousand-square-foot restaurant warrants a change in the signal timing, which could have a domino effect on the other traffic signals in the area. So, that's our position. And I'm not saying we are foreclosing any other thoughts, but we want to hear what the commission's beliefs are, and Jason can address that more specifically. Now, with regard to the circulation of Costco, again, we respectfully disagreed with Roger about, first of all, the need for it, but more importantly, whether it has any association with Panera. Roger believes, and I believe this is a good faith belief, that once you submit an application for a special permit anywhere on the site, that if, then the commission can look at any other condition on the site to determine whether something needs to be upgraded or changed. Our position is that this is a Panera that is separate and apart, and has nothing to do with the Costco circulation, and we are providing safe and convenient circulation to Panera. The Costco circulation was approved by this commission in 2003. We monitor that, both our tenants and the landlord, Brixmore, monitors that condition. We have not, we are not aware of any complaints, any accidents, any lawsuits. We understand that it's busy, and that's good, but we're not aware of any condition that is unsafe. Certainly, Brixmore and Costco and even Panera has as great of an interest or greater for the safe and convenient parking and travel and access into the Costco building and into Panera. We understand how vigorously Roger believes in these two conditions. Frankly, we would like to hear from the commission. I mean, certainly, we would like to get an approval. We'd like to get approvals as quickly as possible, so if we can have a bit of a dialogue on those two issues, I think it would be very helpful.
You know, and I totally agree with you in terms of, you know, but I think that in terms of to be responsible and proactive in, you know, reviewing the planning of, you know, the shopping center right now, it would be irresponsible for us not to mention some of, you know, the potential that exists out there, and some of the, you know, the, you know, conflicts, you know, because, again, I shop there all the time, and everybody's always courteous, and everybody stops, you know, to allow the pedestrians to go through there. And, you know, and I'm amazed that they actually stop, you know, all the time.
So, it's working.
Yeah, and it is working.
It works.
And I, but, you know, but I, you know, and, you know, but I agree that, you know, if we at least mention it, it plants a seed in your head that maybe later on, if something does go wrong, you know, something could happen. And I think that it's just responsible, proactive planning that is occurring right now. And, you know, and I agree with you that, you know, I don't see that, you know, if you made a drive, that metal drive aisle into Costco area right now, that would be so disruptive that it would totally destroy, you know, the flow of traffic that's there right now. But that sometime in the future, you know, it might be necessary. And as long as that that seed has been planted, at least, you know, we can acknowledge the fact that we are being proactive, not reactive. Because if we're only reacting to something that happens, you know, we're not really planning, and planning is being proactive.
I agree with all that. I've represented Brixmore for years. I know that they are a very high-quality landlord. I know that they would never want to do anything to create an unsafe condition for their tenants or their customers. Frankly, they would be driving customers and tenants away if they were to do that. So, if we can agree that we can eliminate that condition with the understanding that Brixmore will maintain oversight of that area and address it if it becomes necessary, but again, the history since 2003 or 2004, once this building was constructed, upon the approval of this commission, has been, there has been no unsafe conditions. Understanding that it's busy, but that's.
It's not always to say that we do everything right. Sometimes we might make a mistake. The thing is, you go out there, and if you are out there, let's say, when the officer is there and the cones are up, it does change the traffic pattern entirely, because you can't go straight through, let's say, up to the auto center.
I understand that that's a condition that happens twice a year.
Also, even during a regular day, if somebody is loading on a piece of furniture or a large TV, they also will block the exit going out. And I, it was a mess up there the last time I was up. The traffic was stopped because they were coming from every direction.
Given the state of retail today, the fact that there's actually a busy Brixton mortar store, that's a wonderful thing.
You're right, but that is a good draw. That is a great place to be.
Yeah, and.
And Panera wants to move in next quarter.
Right. Even if Panera didn't come, which I hope you do, but even if Panera didn't come, Costco would be the same.
Oh, yes.
It's not going to change Costco. I'm with Rick. I go there all the time. My husband goes to Home Depot all the time, and it's a very busy but well-maintained parking plaza. So.
Oh, it is, but the traffic in front of the doors up at that end.
But the thing is, we're not addressing Costco right now. We are addressing Panera. Panera is what we're dealing with.
Public health and welfare property.
You know, and yes, we can look at the whole property, but if the commission made a mistake, or the commission did something with the circulation of traffic.
No, it was a mistake, it was conditions at the time.
Well, if whatever happened, why are we putting that responsibility on somebody who, who has to pay for that? I mean, literally, that's going to cause something like that.
We don't. We didn't say it's Panera that was asking. We're asking the owner of this shopping plaza.
Yes, but to hold up or to put that condition on Panera is not, to me, is right.
It's not proposed to put it on Panera.
Again, you know, the only thing that I see is that, you know, we just want them to acknowledge the fact that there could be a possible condition there. And I, like you said, I don't think that this is going to hold, you know, I'm not married to this, and I'm not going to die by it, but I think that, you know, what we need to do is be proactive in our planning rather than reactive, and, you know, to look at the overall function of the plaza and define the fact that, okay, there is a defect, whether it's a significant defect or a minor defect, does it have to be addressed right now? I don't think that it does, but I think that maybe eventually it should be addressed. But, you know, I'm not going to hold up approving Panera for that, but like you said, we're planting the seed, and let the seed grow a little bit. And if it grows enough where people think that it is a problem, maybe it will get addressed at a future time, but not necessarily, you know, we shouldn't ignore it, stick our head in the sand and say.
No.
It doesn't exist.
We shouldn't have it as a condition on here, that, which is what, there is a condition that says a revised parking and circulation plan will be submitted that addresses the identified site issues.
Well, it's up to you when you get there.
So, that's what I'm saying. I don't think, I don't think that's necessary. So, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, the thing is, it doesn't say it has to be constructed. All it says is develop a plan, and the way I read it is that, okay, here's your plan, and when we want to act on it, we will act on it, and when we don't want to act on it, we won't.
Well, then what's the point of a plan?
Then what's the point?
But it's a plan, but at least you have a plan, so.
Something to look for, Will.
So, I have.
Okay, go ahead.
I have, addressing the two, the two comments that we're discussing here. We're talking about site-specific conditions, nine and twelve. Nine has to do with Costco. Twelve has to do with adjustment of the light.
Yes.
So, for number nine, relating to Costco, it says, "Specifically addressing the conflict between pedestrians and vehicles at the entrance to the Costco billing." I see, I understand, and I agree with the commission's responsibility to look at the entire site, generally speaking, and figure out what the conditions at the site are. However, I read our responsibility as addressing circulation with respect to the proposed use. Our proposed use is Panera. It is across that whole aisle, so whatever's happening at the Costco entrance, which is at times treacherous, I would say. People zip along there, and it's wonderful that it's busy. I agree with you. But what's happening at that entrance does not flow over to how people will get in and out of Panera, in my opinion. I see the only issue about circulation is if people come in that entrance and then turn a left into the Panera, but that still doesn't really impact, in my opinion, the entrance to Costco when people are coming in and out of the Costco. I see those as two extremely locationally separate areas and conceptually separate areas. So, I would disagree with that condition. I agree it needs to be addressed. I don't know how it gets addressed on this application, so that's my opinion. My next point is to site-specific condition number twelve. Applicants responsible for the adjustment to the left-hand turn light. Now, I don't understand as a practical matter how that addresses circulation and traffic within the site. I see that as addressing circulation and traffic out on the road, which is not this property. I believe that property is owned by the town.
Public health, it's welfare and safety is our business.
Sure, sure, but I don't understand, I, believe me, I understand our mandate. But what I understand the applicant is saying is that requires an application to a state commission, which could be denied, and even then, I don't understand how we're essentially addressing, or by the condition, I understand the condition, to be addressing the scenario where leaving the plaza, it's sometimes hard to turn left. Now, that to me doesn't say that it's hard for me to drive within and around the Panera. That has to do with anyone leaving the plaza. And I don't quite understand how the commission could require someone to seek state approval as a site-specific condition. Now, this is recorded on the land records and should arguably not have to do anything with the applicant, because this is a land use issue. So, I don't, I don't agree with that condition, at least in my opinion. I agree that generally speaking, traffic is tough in that intersection, but I don't know that it's our duty to require, or I don't know how this can be contingent, because we would be approving it even with this condition. So, I don't know how you could even do that. But to require someone to seek state approval for something that I don't know how to change a traffic lane, I don't know how to apply for that.
Here's how you solve the problem. You have a local traffic authority. The OSTA will inquire as to the local traffic authority's preference. The local traffic authority can indicate to OSTA that it is their preference that we eliminate that free turn left, and that you can only make a left at the dedicated left-hand turn signal. And if OSTA, in its wisdom, agrees with the local traffic authority, that's what's going to happen. If OSTA disagrees, it won't. Simple.
There's a recommendation from the police department that that light be changed. Usually, we follow the recommendation of the police department.
The light was installed as a condition of approval for the Costco. The, if you look at, if you look at that plan I gave you, the condition of approval was, and Costco installed that light.
It's similar to the high school where we required the light, and the state refused, and that's what happened.
Costco installed a light in front of Home Depot or in front of Costco? Because there's two lights there. The Costco intersection, it's crazy on a weekend. Home Depot, in front of Home Depot, is insane on a nice weekend. Congratulations to the owner of the plaza. He's doing a good job keeping tenants in there. I see why Panera wants to go there. But the intersection where Panera's going.
But the intersection where Panera's going, nobody's going to pull in the Costco intersection to go to Panera.
Well, they are.
You know? Home Depot, you may get a few people that cut up that way, but they're going there site-specific for that store.
For Panera, that's what...
The green light, how many of you have sat at a red light to turn left and there's nobody around you? But you can't take a...
And that's, I agree.
Because it's red.
Yep, I agree with you.
It's absurd. I mean, we're all adults. We know how to drive.
Yes. Well, when you have, when you make a dedicated turn only, and you can only make that turn, you stack the traffic up behind you. So when you have something as busy as Home Depot and Panera, and you do that to that light, you're going to have a stacking, which is what happens on Hazard Avenue with the CV, like, because people take that left onto Freshwater, it stacks the traffic all the way up, backs things up, people can't go around, and that's exactly what's going to happen there. And we don't want that to happen.
And it doesn't happen at Costco because that light is the same way. There's a green light you can turn left on as long as the traffic isn't coming and you don't stack up.
And if there is a serious issue that arises, which I agree it's not going to with Panera bread, maybe something bigger, then our police department can address it themselves and get the problem taken care of.
The, in fact, I asked Roger for a accident report at Costco light, and so I don't know. But I haven't seen, I beg your pardon?
Did he get the report?
I hadn't seen it.
And just to correct the record, because the applicant keeps saying that Roger feels strongly about the light. The, we have, our responsibility is the planning office. We circulate it. It was the police traffic officer who requested this, and so we brought it forward on behalf of the police traffic officer. In the entire several months that we've discussed this with the applicant, it didn't come up as an issue with respect to the planning office.
Roger, it's...
So that's, the issue, the issue came up, and the second issue, the second issue with respect to the Costco situation, it's our obligation to bring it forward. We brought it forward. We have a proposed condition. The applicant has talked about possibly putting in a right-hand turn lane. Coming out of there is a way to address it. But it's entirely up to the commission. If you want to strike those two conditions, you strike them.
That's...
Or you want to modify them, you modify them.
That's what you're supposed to present.
But it's my responsibility to bring them forward.
Absolutely. You did your job.
Roger, did this come up with ART also, I would imagine?
But I'd also, I'm sorry?
Did this come up at the ART about the light and so forth?
The traffic safety officer. So, so, but with respect to, just for the clarify for the record, is the commission's put traffic light conditions on applications all the time, and they go to STC and what have you, or what is now called the office or whatever, but we all call it still STC. That's like standard, you know, standard, standard practice, so I just...
You're going to do the same thing with, and you've been...
Just like when Costco went in there, it said you have to have a light. They went to STC, they got the light in there. So I don't want the commission to think that you don't have the authority, but I'm just saying that, that normally, normally, if you were asking for a change in a light, you'd have some basis of doing that. And we don't have anything from the police department that says there's a history of accidents there.
Yeah, that's what I like.
So there's nothing.
So we can solve that problem too.
And also a trip calculator that the police usually sit and do that, too.
I'm sympathetic to that. The issue of the Costco, my responsibility is to bring it forward.
Roger, can we stay with them? Let's get back to them. But we will be doing the same thing on Route 5 North whenever it comes back. But let's finish with this traffic here.
Okay, so, so, do we want to try to resolve these one at a time?
It's up to you. Yeah, go ahead.
Can, can we agree that we can strike the condition regarding specifically condition nine about revising the Costco parking? I think we're all aware of the situation. The landlord's aware of the situation. Costco's aware of the situation. We spoke to the Costco store manager. He has received no complaints. He believes that they, that it operates in a safe...
People are going to put up with it. They aren't going to, in fact, I don't even know who the manager is. And I don't think they're going to back in the store and ask him, but they aren't going to complain. They're, they're putting up with it. But there is a problem there. If somebody gets hit and they know that we've talked about it, then you probably will have a problem.
But, Mr. Chairman, there's, there has been over a decade of history of this operating in a safe manner. So I understand...
People come here because they don't want to go, well, I don't, up to West Springfield because that's so far back and you have to go through...
Understood.
A maze to get there.
But we're trying to solve a problem that maybe doesn't really exist. Is it busy? Yes. Do people have to stop and wait, let people cross? Yes. That's the condition at any, you know, busy retail store. It's, frankly, I don't think it's...
But the possibility of an accident or somebody getting hit, hit up there is great.
That possibility exists in any parking lot, in any retail center, anywhere in the world.
Not to the degree of there. If you're willing to accept your responsibility...
But it hasn't happened. It hasn't happened.
Well, it hasn't happened, but...
If we are proposing Costco tonight and you saw this plan, then maybe there's, you know, I would say, gee, maybe you have a point. But since 2004, since this store's been open...
Well, to the owner of the mall, we do. And the owner of the mall to a degree is involved in this application, but that's, let's, let the other people decide on that.
Actually, I think the reason it hasn't happened is people that go there know it's going to be like that, and you go in driving slow because you know there's people walking out. They're always going to walk out. They're always going to back out.
Well, I don't go in that way anymore.
No matter which way you go in, you're going to see that there. So you just drive accordingly.
Exactly, exactly.
You don't go in there like you're in a hurry to get lunch, you know?
Right. And it works.
So, you know...
People follow the rules.
Well, some do, and the rest get close calls, but so far, nobody's crunched too bad.
Right. And providing another means of, of access out onto Freshwater, I don't think it's going to solve the fundamental issue that Costco's busy, which is terrific, and people are taking their carts out to their cars.
Expect that when you go there. It's just part of it.
That entrance and exit, people for Panera, they're not going to use that exit entrance.
Although I will tell you that I was at the shopping center at Costco's when somebody was pulling out of the driveway and somebody wasn't looking, and they, they did hit one another. But it was in the, it wasn't in front of, you know, the walkway. It was more where people aren't paying attention, so...
You can't legislate stupid.
I know. Well, that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, it does happen, and I happened just to be there one day when that did happen, so...
Okay.
We all agree that there's a problem there.
And I think that, and, and again, I don't think that it should deter us from acting on this application right now.
Okay, I think there's a consensus. I don't know if it's unanimous, but I think we have a consensus on condition nine. So let's talk about condition 12. Why don't we just say that it is the preference of the local traffic authority, and if you want to include yourselves, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the free flow left be eliminated? I agree with Ms. Scott that there's going to be a queuing issue with regard to the left turn lane.
Those...
And again...
Those lanes aren't long enough for that.
I, we all agree. And we do have the state traffic accident data, and it shows that, I know, Jason can interpret.
Jason.
That's right.
Jason Adams from McMahon Associates. So we did take a look at the available data from the Connecticut DOT, and what that shows is that at the Signalized Home Depot intersection, over the past three years of available data, there were 10 crashes. So just over three crashes a year on average, which, given the traffic volume out here, is very low. And that generally indicates to us, from a traffic engineering perspective, that there's no existing safety deficiency at the signal. It's not to say that a crash hasn't happened or won't happen in the future, but that there is not an existing safety deficiency, and that's generally how we proceed. Looking at this project and the number of vehicle trips that would be added to the intersection, we wouldn't expect the safety of the intersection to become any worse just because the Panera is there.
This is literally 1% of the square footage of that existing center. So we're happy to live with the conditions of approval. If we can eliminate condition nine and either eliminate 12 or modify it, that we leave it in the hands of the people who know best, which is the Office of State Traffic Administration, while expressing the town's preference. Or at least the police, the police preference.
I'm good with eliminating it because we can always have our police department address this at a later, we can always have the police address it at a later date if it becomes a problem.
Oh, yeah.
But this intersection is never going to be half of what Costco is.
Oh, no.
And putting a red light there does not solve the Costco situation, so I'm good with eliminating that condition.
And the police always are available to make any of those changes anywhere where they want to and recommend them whenever they want to. So it's really not on us to prompt them to do it. If they wanted to do it, they could do it anyway.
And to be honest, I think if they did that at the Costco intersection, they'd make things worse, not better.
No, and I agree. I agree to eliminate it. I don't think it is necessary, so...
We got consensus on them both.
That light's an entirely different light anyhow than the one at Costco's.
Right, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
That light has breaks in between because it allows cross-traffic.
And with that light too, you know, it used to have a high volume of mall traffic, which you really don't get anymore. So, you know, that has eased, I think, that intersection as well a little bit, so, you know, not tremendously, but a little bit. So at least you don't have that volume coming out of the mall.
But if it changes, again, it's up to the local police. So now, where are we? You got...
We're at...
Eliminating 12, is that what you're talking about?
Nine and 12 we're eliminating.
Okay.
We'll jump on, you got to go to the public.
Wait a minute, I, yeah, right. I just want to get track of what we're, so the public knows what we're doing. And you want nine out of there?
Nine and 12.
Nine and 12.
No, we're not going to renumber them.
It would be 31.
31 conditions.
Because are we going to include the clarification of the patio with a different kind of scoring, just, just for, you know, architectural reasons, or are we satisfied...
There should be a plan on file, yes.
You know, are we satisfied with that, you know, it doesn't need any delineation to that?
I won't.
They do a nice job, you know, the Paneras that they have now is always spotless. It looks nice, the furniture and the umbrellas and stuff, they're always in pristine condition, so hopefully, you know...
He did a visual description, I think.
You'll gain our trust by just doing the same thing.
Yeah, so we'll eliminate that condition that we discussed, so, okay, that's gone.
Okay.
Good public hearing.
Well, his consensus then is what he wants is generally, I guess, is those two, nine and 12.
Nine and 12 are out.
And on the patio, you want, accept his visual description. And so as long as the secretary has, the secretary has taken that down.
You got it.
Okay.
They can always send us a drawing just so we can be...
The material was removed and stored during winter.
Be with your results.
Because a lot of times, if it's...
Well, there's a section of the regulation they have to comply with anyhow, so they would...
I'm sorry?
There's a whole section of the regulations they have to comply with anyhow, 5.20.2F, so...
You got who?
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor against this application. Roger?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm good.
You're good, okay. Then I'll close public hearing 2904.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application, public hearing 2904, 130 Elm Street, Panera's standalone building platform, as a, as the draft resolution that was prepared for the commission by the planning department with the 31 conditions in recognizing that we're going to eliminate condition number nine, and we are going to eliminate condition number 12.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I just want to say that I love the Panera. I've done, I've done the mobile piece where we've gone and ordered on there, so I totally understand that, and that has changed with the times. I'm very glad that we will have a store that will be freestanding instead of having to go into the mall and deal with all the traffic and stuff, which I really don't, have never liked. And the kiosks, I mean, I know what it's going to look like because I've visited the other Paneras around the state, you know, different ones, and I know those ordering kiosks are neat, it's smooth, it's, it works, you know, they're, it's a really good business. And I'm thankful that you're staying here in our town, and I'm thankful that you're investing in, you know, building a building that will be here for a long time, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that as far as that goes because difficulty in walking the distance. Where the location, I'm sorry?
They deliver.
Oh, I know. Now that started.
You don't have to.
But...
You've got to go anyway.
And having to drive by and on a level and not have to go through the traffic.
Yeah, not only do they do such a great job, you know, in present, in their presenting of their food items, they also donate what they don't use to very good networks, and I think that that's amazing.
I had a friend that was on pickup and delivered to the places that were required, yes. One of their...
It's, it's wonderful, and more people should know about it. It's a really good thing to do.
I was just, I should have mentioned that. I'm sorry I didn't.
It is. It's, it's great that you do that, and the people, a lot of people aren't aware that you do. Any other comments?
When are they looking to be open?
There you go.
Are they shooting for this year, Christmas?
I'm hoping it's going to be this year. I don't know. We're going to have to convene. We want to open as quickly as we can.
Are you going to have any gluten-free items on your menu?
Well, let's not put it off any longer. Let's go to...
Please.
I just want to mention the fact that our planning department and, you know, commend, you know, Roger and Raquel and, you know, the rest of the department, that, you know, they did identify a lot of, you know, you know, items that we need to be notified, that we need to be informed that, you know, these things, you know, occur and need to be recognized in allowing us to make that decision as to what we need to do, rather than just discarding and allowing us to make that decision as to what we need to do rather than just discarding these things and saying, oh, you don't have to think about this, you don't have to think about that in terms of, you know, in order to make knowledgeable decisions, we really should be considering everything. And, you know, I just want to commend our department for doing that.
Right. It is something that the property owners have to keep in mind and then consider the possibilities.
Yeah, I want to just say that the planning department spent literally hundreds of hours on this thing, bringing it to fruition. So I don't want anybody to think that because we're down to two items that we were putting forward, but it was...
Let's make everybody happy and somebody, let's call, let's call for a vote, please.
Motion to...yeah, it's already been done.
Okay, well, it's been approved, but...
No.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Those abstentioned? What are you doing?
Nothing. I'm for it. I hate...
Seven, 0, 0. Thank you for...
Congratulations.
Thank you for doing this for the town.
They deliver.
Oh, I know, I know. But I have a trouble because I like so many of them. I like to know what they got baked for the day.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
We do it at work. We have delivery.
Oh, you could do it.
Roger, S P R 1745. S P R 1745.
The applicant control modules requested that it be postponed so that they can work out the issues with respect to the fire department.
Motion then on the floor, please. Yeah, but tabled for whatever.
If we resolve the issues with the highest possible, we'll let them do it eventually. So then those are resolved.
So do we put it off? The motion should be for two weeks?
I don't know whether they can resolve them in two weeks or not, but we'll bring it back as soon as they're resolved.
Well, a motion for two weeks and...
It says C D D 69. So what is that?
Roger, what does C D D stand for?
That's must make a decision by.
Okay, by the 9th of June.
Just checking, thanks.
So we need to be cognizant that...
And they requested it be tabled so they can grant an extension.
Do you have that in writing?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we table S P R 1745, 89 Phoenix Avenue to our next meeting in two weeks on June 2nd?
7.
7.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Roger, any report?
Yeah, I have...
Okay, oh, all right.
I have one requested administrative approval.
Well, we aren't there yet.
Okay.
No report? All right.
Well, we're...
Now we're on approvals. Go ahead.
Okay, well, for on the report, you have that you have four workshops coming up. You all got the notice of that. So there's one next week. There's actually two this month and then there's two in May.
Would you send out an email, please?
Yeah, we'll send it out. And also, there are four or five major projects that are coming in any minute now. Pride is coming back. The Villages is coming back. And there's two others that...
Huh?
Target, $4 million renovation of Target, which is a major plus for the mall. And so there's a bunch of things coming in. It's very, very busy. And so it's good. We want to be busy. With respect to the 496 Enfield Street, I met with the applicant's attorney and we've agreed on all of the items that need to be contained in an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we expect that to be coming in shortly. And on the administrative approvals, 17 Bacon Road is an empty building. We do have pictures of it. And in an effort to work with the applicant, this is a building that currently encroaches over the line into its neighbor and they will have to give us an as-built drawing. They've got a building permit and to tear down the portion of the building that encroaches over the line and to rebuild it. It still wouldn't meet the setback, but at least we'd eliminate the encroachment. Building's been vacant for a long time. The use is an allowed use by site plan. We have a software vendor who's currently in Springfield and would like his leases up and he'd like to get in there as soon as possible. So we do have a site plan previously and we will get an as-built when they complete the renovation. It's operated, the building will operate exactly as it always did previously. There's basically a change in tenant. So I'd like to ask for permission to sign the building permit and then we'll get the as-built. When it's done, we'll get another business moving into Enfield and a vacant building back occupied. If you have any...I have pictures here if you want to see what the building looks like.
Well, okay, now, questions for him. He is asking for administrative approval. Uh-huh? Oh.
This is the picture I was telling you.
Thank you.
What company used to be in there?
Sarah, you'll have to be voting because Kenny's out.
Mary's out too, so Linda would...
Linda will vote. She's not at all.
Mary Scott and Candace...
Mary's gone, so you've got to...Mary and Ken are out, so you could sit both of them in front of the back.
Who's the other alternate?
Ken is...
I'm not hearing what you're talking about now, so...
This is the original site plan. And there's an encroachment over the line.
We only have one alternate.
No, Sarah's...
Sarah and Linda.
Oh, I keep forgetting Linda. I think of her as a full name.
Just because she's the vice chair doesn't mean she's not an alternate.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, Linda will vote on this too.
So what...what we're doing this is we're working with them because like we can hold it up until they did the work and gave us a site plan and then the tenant would be long gone and couldn't move in. So the building would operate the same way it's always done. Here's a picture of it. And we will get an updated as-built. So I think it's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, he's got somebody coming in from another town.
Springfield.
And which part is he taking off?
What he's doing is he's taking the center portion of the building and the other two units will be for either future expansion of him or if he wants to put another tenant in there, he's agreed he will come back with it.
Didn't you say that that would...the one is over the line?
Yeah, so the building currently on this site plan is over the line. So they're going to correct that.
Correct the site plan or correct the building?
They're going to actually knock down this addition and rebuild it on the property.
Okay.
But and then so rather than have them give us a site plan now and then give them an as-built later...
Well, that's why I said...
So what we're trying to do is to work with them.
On that picture, which...
I've got to get an as-built later anyhow.
What part of that picture are they tearing down and moving?
Well, it's on the front of the building. I don't know.
Oh, so it's not shown? Okay.
They've been working on it.
It's certainly not shown, but it's in the front.
Okay, okay. Any problems?
If you're okay with that, it would help the business get in there.
Sounds like a plan.
Sarah, you're back. You're out. Okay.
So Sarah...
She's voting.[1697.13]